No, she's leaving. She's leaving Friday morning for Europe. And she said I have, and she's been so good.
Meeting is called to order, Southham Town Planning Board, Thursday the 7th, 12th, 2024. The Secretary will call the roll.
Chair LaFara was absent, Vice Chair Vinity.
Present.
Secretary is here, Board Member Lutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Could you please rise for the President of the Regents?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our final meeting of the year. Our Chair Jackie's getting a well-deserved rest out of a terrific effort in the wake of terrific documentary film festival. Of course, leaving us with the heaviest agenda of the year. She's always watching. Merry Christmas, Jackie. So, item one on the agenda is to set the planning board meeting dates in accordance with the schedule that is published in the record. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria? Second by George, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes, one absent. I forgot to ask, the Secretary, do we have any minutes?
Yes, we do. November fourteenth.
November fourteenth?
That is correct.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Motion by Kate. Second by George, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Six yes, one absent. Is Janice jumping in?
I think yes.
No, that got tabled, right?
Oh, that got tabled, the referral?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so we don't have to even go into work session. I'll do the work session item anyway.
Yeah, Dennis, just a little housekeeping. We could, I said, quote it, Dennis, the applicant for Heatherwood has, Heatherwood has an engagement to go to.
Okay.
So I'd like to do that first, and then I have one for Joe Godin that require all six four members.
Okay, that's right, yeah. Okay, so. So the Heatherwood, we're going to now?
We'll do Heatherwood, yeah.
Okay. Tom, please submission conference report.
Yeah, so the board will remember this property. It's 166 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. It sits between Flanders Road to the west and Springville to the east. It's adjacent to a gas station. It also abuts the atrium office complex that everyone's familiar with. And you'll see the property here. As I said, it's split zone MF44 in the back of the property. That happened sometime in the upzoning between 57 and 72. And then the front remains as office district. So it's one property, split zone. And adjacent to it is an existing apartment development. And this application is for a mixed-use development.
Anthony, could you pause for a second? We don't have counsel.
She's in an exact session, and she says if she needs to come in, just get her.
Okay, so we can proceed.
So she's aware. And the proposal is for additional townhome rental units, not rental units, but additional townhomes. Fifteen altogether on the MF44 portion of the property, together with garages, I believe, driveways, swimming pool, clubhouse, those type of amenities. That includes the thirteen that they're allowed as a right in the MF44 zoning district. And then the Long Island workforce housing, ten percent gives you the additional. So that's where the fifteen comes from on the back portion. And in the frontier, they're proposing roughly 11,000 square feet of commercial space with nine apartment units on the second floor. And again, in there, I believe, two of them would be affordable. So four affordable altogether.
Anthony, the project description says the fifteen will be, the fifteen will be three-bedroom rental units.
Okay, oh, there you go.
Because that was good.
In my description, there you go. Perfect. So actually, so just to show you the plans real quick on the site plan, as I said in the back, these are just conceptual, everyone understands. So the back would have the units, and then the front there oriented towards the street, which is, you know, sort of what we want in the downtown area.
And that's, those are the stores?
Those would be the stores. And just to give you, if you're looking at the street there, that's sort of what the commercial component would look like.
With apartments above.
With apartments above. And, so, yeah. And that's actually sort of a nice design that has that downtown look to it, the structures attached.
That's what's facing Montauk Highway.
That's what's facing Montauk Highway. And I do have an elevation of what's facing Lamp, Lamp Light Road, I think, which is the private road, which is a similar design, so. So I have a report here for the board. First page was the description. The second page is just a description of what was happening on each portion of the property, the parking and improvements. If you go to the third page, that's where the public comments come in. We did get comments at the hearing, we did get some comments. Concerns about the existing apartments being substandard before introducing additional apartments. Concerns about the parking being inadequate. Just concerns that there's already parking situations in and around, you know, along Montauk Highway. Traffic congestion, obviously onsite septic concern, so they want to know about, you know, water quality protection. There was a reference to a cemetery, which we will, we'll get into the report, and during the public record, there was some reference. Some folklore, if you will, about an existing cemetery. We don't know much, too much about it, but I'll, I'll address it in the report. Again, a comprehensive review of traffic and parking along Montauk Highway. Again, an analysis about the potential grave site. And then, you know, bringing the existing apartments into compliance with, you know, today's standard. But there's a point, that is an existing apartment complex, that's not really part of this application.
But it is owned by the same.
Yeah, we'll have clarification, believe it is, yeah. So if you go to page four, this is where I just start discussing some of the issues that I think we would want to address here. By and large, this is, you know, we want a mixed-use project in your downtown area, so mixes of commercial and residential, and some affordable. So that, that's good. So number one, it's a special exception application also because of the apartments in the zoning district.
And that's because it's a split zone?
No, it's just that apartments in certain zoning districts are special exceptions. Some in the office district, I believe, Hamlet Commercial and Hamlet Office, they're special exception uses. Yeah, so they, they just have some other standards. So I put the density standards in here. And I always recommend that we confirm with the chief building inspector that they're meeting, you know, the zoning requirements under their interpretation before they submit. I just want a clarification. Are there any apartments proposed over the clubhouse, or are they all limited to the retail? Do the apartments, units within the OD portion of the property have access to the amenities in the MF44? I'm not saying they should, I'm just raising the question, you know, how separate these, these two? Because the, the site plan for the front part of this, with the apartments above the commercial, does show a clubhouse for that, for those tenants as well. So it seems that these are sort of two separate, you know, residential entities, if you will, but we could get clarification. Number two is secret, it's a type-one action. Because of the parking, it's going to drive it up there, over 50 parking spaces, makes it a type-one action under our code. So in the second part of that, this is where we'll talk about the cemetery. So it was stated during the hearing and written comment period that a grave site is located on or near the subject site along Montauk Highway, and it's known as Dane Cemetery, for which no official documentation was really presented or submitted. We just had, you know, the verbal. Nevertheless, public comments strongly suggest that this cemetery existed. However, a review of historical aerial photography, town records, and title certification going as far back as the 1700s does not indicate that there was ever a cemetery there. Further, the property is not located in the archaeological sensitive area, and therefore further archaeological review is not required. So I wanted to lay out the facts as I know them for this. But one thing we do know, traffic concern. So when we get to the secret part of this, and I've already advised the applicant, when you come in, always front load as much information as possible, makes our secret review better. Obviously, traffic is going to be a big thing that we're going to look at. So you like to note in there that we'll be looking for some type of traffic and pedestrian circulation. It is a downtown area still, you know, the western end, but still, we want that. Number three talks about sustainable design elements being incorporated into the, into the plan as we normally state. I know we like to call out now vehicle charging stations. Are we doing a percentage, or I forgot how that works?
Two, five percent, or a minimum of two, but this is a residential, right?
Yeah.
So it's not appropriate, except for maybe the, the back of the commercial, right?
Okay.
That would make sense.
Well, yeah, so we say here consideration for electrical vehicle charging stations, without the specifics.
Similar to the development in Quayog, the idea of putting in the electrical conduits for the apartments and the condos while it's being built for, so that in the future they can be, and where they have garages, that's, it just could be in the garage, but.
This is different, might be a different application, because rental, Quayog is going to be owned, owned.
No, it's not.
Quayog is all rental?
It's all rental.
Oh, okay.
And since we have secret review, I believe we have the ability to require some environmental mitigation.
I think putting infrastructure away from the houses, I don't see, I can't remember what the plan looks like, but certainly people who have garages can put that as part of their home
Yeah.
accessory, but where they have, when the visitors park, you can put the.
But it's a rental, though, they would, I would assume they would have to get permission from the owner.
Are those rentals, or they're?
They're all rentals.
They're all rental.
Is the rear unit going to have a basement? No basements.
I mean, I'm charging my car just with a regular 110 outlet in my garage, but, and garages usually have an outlet, but I, I only, I have a plug-in hybrid, so I'm not charging the whole electric car, which I would have to invest in a special electric line.
All right, I, I could fix the wording here. I still think, you know, at the very least, is that since we're looking at a mixed-use development with some pedestrian concept in there, that we will leave this open, that we would like to examine the possibility, however it's going to be built and when, you know, but let's, let's leave it in there that we will look at it without committing to anything too specific.
But I'd like to.
I mean, any project, to your point, while they have everything excavated to run PVC conduit, you know.
Yeah, but we're going to note that here, is that these should be.
So it's ready.
Be ready, that's why they.
And I would strongly recommend the applicant to think about doing some of the environmental things, environmental things that we normally suggest, because we have a secret review here, and that may be an opportunity for us to say, you do this, because that, that will be somewhat of a mitigation.
Yeah, and it's a type-one.
If they think about it, maybe they can bring some stuff to us without, without us having to say, you must do this. So I just, I, I think it's important that the applicant understands that we have a little bit of authority here to require some environmental.
You have the type-one action, so it, it, the project's already met a certain threshold for an environmental review, so you're right.
And so if you just move this plan a second, see what.
And remember, these are very conceptual, so we don't get into construction.
Okay, thank you.
Zoning compliance, so I just put in there, when you got a project like this, let's bring it to the chief and make sure that, that all the little setbacks and everything, I didn't miss anything. Number five goes through the parking analysis here. So on the, on the northern portion here, they're indicating that they need 38 spaces, and that they're providing 36 within the garages and the driveways to the units. So that doesn't meet the parking requirement, but I'm also seeing what appears to be some guest parking. So I note that in the report, and so they should clarify, you know, include them in the calculations, and if they need to address a couple of parking spaces, like I would say, they could do it. I like that. It's, you know, as opposed to over here where they have much larger parking lots. Most of the parking here will be handled with driveways and garages, which I think is a little bit nicer. The OD portion of the project requires roughly 49 parking spaces, and they're indicating compliance. But they're also indicating land bank parking back here. So I note in here that, I don't know if the land bank, if, you know, if they can fit into the calculations at all. So that we need to show that, because A, what is the parking requirement? Then you would have to authorize or allow, they would have to provide a minimum of two-thirds before we could do land bank parking, and then, of course, we require covenants get recorded to do land bank parking. I don't necessarily have a problem with land bank parking, but we'll need the calculations and know how many spaces it is, so we could determine if it's in compliance with.
Well, if the community feels that there's not enough parking in the area, would, would land banking actually exacerbate that situation?
You know, the, the idea behind land banking is to create an area for additional parking, and then to open it for the planning board to allow it if and when they determine that this property's parking needs are not being met. Not typically for a larger parking issue, but your point is, is well-taken. So we'll look at this, and maybe we'll note in here that maybe depending on
They might have to.
what's secret, they might have to just provide the parking. I think that's legitimate.
I think at some point, we should look at the on-street parking regulations in that area.
There's no on-street parking that.
Yeah, I don't believe so, but I'll double check.
Two-hour. A lot of the Hamlet centers have two-hour ones.
Yeah, this is on the
This location where it is.
The western end there is a little. Yeah, I believe so, but I could double check. And then I note that parking for residential versus the commercial should be distinguished. It also says in the report, and I do note, because they do note here, potential to convert to individual residential parking garage bays. That might be a nice amenity for the residents, but if they're going to do that, obviously we'll need elevations. And we do note in here that, since it is mixed-use, we don't want there to be a conflict between the residential use, so the location of those structures would be important. I don't know that I would put them on either side, you know, when you have a commercial development, but should be clustered, you know, with one spot where the residents could use them.
So you're, you're saying that they might actually build separate garages?
Well, they, they calling them parking garage bays, so I, I left the question.
Might just up covering, so.
Yeah, but it says potential, because I don't know that, you know, they've worked out every site plan concept, so I dress it in here.
This is a pre-submission.
And then six talks about potential cross-access, so eventually you wind up to the cemetery, you're not going to get any further than that with cross-access. So we do have cross-access in place at the atrium going out to Flanders. So when getting to the formal site plan, we have some more construction details and a better layout of where things are going. There may be some opportunities. We did have on the gas station up there, a site plan approval. They never went through with the site plan approval. I don't know if there's any cross-access there, but I'll, I'll verify. So we'll, we'll look at.
Do you know the atrium cross-accesses, Anthony?
I think it's that blue that goes to the Flanders Road there, I believe. That one was mapped out for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there's no, there's that, there's opportunity for, from that back parcel to.
Right, and then just get to, yeah, through the gas station, through the bank to, to the subject property.
I know, there is a great chance.
There is a period, a portion which abuts the paved road at the back of the atrium.
Yep, yep.
Which would be good, if they can get in there. So even if they go into the atrium, they don't need to come out and go around.
That's right.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a rough area during the peak, which is daily.
I, I, I went there once to get, have a blood test at the atrium, and I was so lost.
Yeah. Architecture. So I think the playword says, you know, the, the generally seems consistent with the commercial street wall. And so we'll obviously have ARB at the time. I do note most of the existing buildings in the downtown district are one to two and a half stories tall. The elevations indicate appearance of a third or half-story with dormers, but they don't exceed the 35-foot height. I think they're just that for two dormers. But we, of course, ask for four plans and clarification. Eight talks about access. Access is good here. They're proposing it from lamp light, so no new curb cuts onto Montauk, and that's good. I just grade out some, you know, issues that they should look at in, in a development like this, in the location, the interaction between the two sites. Since they are linked, I'm, I'm presuming, and I don't know this, that the, the first set of apartments would have access to the amenities here, but I don't know, so we leave that as a question. Pedestrian connectivity and circulation, and how indoor amenities connect to outdoor amenities. Nine talks about the sewage treatment, which they're proposing for this project in the back corner. It's designed to accommodate the flow associated with this proposed use. I do raise in the report here, I say system specifications have not been provided, but I ask, will the system have, have excess capacity? What is the state of the current system serving the existing development? Can the existing Heatherwood complex connect to this new system? So I raised those questions in there.
Thank you, because I was, you saved me from saying.
I, I know what questions are going to get popped up here. Landscaping, dumpster location and code applied to closure landscape detail. I know, given this is a mixed-use development with a significant residential component, landscaping should consider some of the following in addition to the normal aesthetics. You know, integrated indoor/outdoor space, we see this with the schools sometimes, where they link the indoor, the outdoor space. You know, day lining of stairwells, outdoor open space areas for exercise, indoor, I should say, indoor and outdoor. Bike storage facilities to encourage alternative. And so that kind of stuff, so let's see what kind of pedestrian scale landscaping we can get for the residential component. Eleven goes through lighting standards. These are directly from the code. I did put in the 2700 Kelvin, is it 2700 or 2800?
27.
So I'm presuming that's going to be in place by the time, yeah. So the lighting details, including photometric information. And then the fixtures, we like them to stay at 10 feet high. Twelve talks about the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as there's going to be over-acute disturbance, and they're going to have to do.
Can you show the overhead again, just so we could see, because this site could connect, interestingly, it's up to Red Creek Park where.
It goes across the highway. This is south of Sunrise.
And so is Red Creek.
So is Red Creek.
Were you just Red Creek Sound or?
Yeah, Red Creek Park.
Good Ground, Good Ground.
Good Ground.
Good Ground Park.
Red Creek is across there.
Yeah, I know where Red Creek is, I just didn't know how far away it is from where this property ends, the back part of the property ends.
Doesn't they have to go under the 27?
No, Jackson Avenue.
Yeah, Jackson is the other side.
Oh, it's the other side, okay. Thank you.
And even Good Ground Park, they have several properties between them.
Much further east.
Pretty much covered a lot of it. The applicant had a chance to review the report. Use the podium if you want.
Good afternoon, Sean Sally with Heatherwood, the applicant. Members of the board, thank you for entertaining our, our report today, and Anthony, thank you for preparing it. Just a few brief comments or clarifications after hearing Anthony's recitation of the report. In terms of the sustainable design elements, and I think we mentioned this during the public hearing, Heatherwood is a proponent of sustainability. As far as EV charging stations are concerned, we do plan on incorporating those in this project. And I know there was some discussion about the units, proposed units in the back, making them ready for EV charging stations in the garages, and we would certainly do that. We've done that with our other new construction on Long Island, and it's been, you know, been greatly well-received. So we are, again, very keen on bringing this to Hampton Bays, so just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that. In terms of the parking requirement, you know, we, you know, this is a zoning compliant application, and in terms of parking, the MF zone portion, there are extra spaces that we've labeled guest. They can easily be additional spots designated to each of the units. And in aggregate, we have more than enough, or more than the required parking, so as we advance our site plan, we'll make sure that that's clear. And good pickup, Anthony, we'll, we'll make sure that's clear. Land banking. So on the OD, the mixed-use portion of the property, right, the, the last thing we want to do is overpark or over, over asphalt, if you will. So we will look at the parking, the mixed-use parking as a, as a shared use, to understand what the optimum number of, of parking stalls are to, to serve both the residential uses and the commercial uses, and then work with the planning department in terms of the, the land bank section. That land bank is earmarked for parking, so again, as much as of it that needs to be preserved or, or land banked great, as much as it that needs to be designated as parking up front, we'll make sure that that's the case. The potential cross-access, our parking layout in the OD zone actually contemplates cross-access east and west, and that was a result of conversations with the planning department. So, so you'll see that, and we'll make sure that gets carried through our next round of, of formal site plan submission. Architecture, those dormers on the second and a half story are purely decorative. You know, we took those cues from the pattern book. So again, there, there's, there's no, you know, habitable space on that, on that dormer level. They're just purely, purely decorative. And I think that's it. I just, again, just wanted to make sure that the board had the benefit of those clarifications. Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to add that it's great thanks about the charging stations, but let's do more.
Sounds good.
And Anthony, I just wanted to point out you that on page three there, the fact that the existing development would be brought up to current code, I would think is also important. I don't know what, how it was originally, or when it was originally built, but things like, you know, hard wiring of smoke detectors and things like that may already be, all be done.
Yeah.
But if not, it's important that, that that is tied together.
Yeah, I guess we'd, we should at least understand what's not up to code for starters.
Making them bring the existing building.
Yeah, if, if in fact there are areas that are deficient.
It's all one property, too.
Yeah.
So it's part of the application.
Yeah. It is a separate parcel.
Well, that's true, yeah, that would be a separate parcel.
It's a separate entity, again, under the Heatherwood umbrella, but it is not the subject of this proposed site plan. It is a different, distinct parcel.
But noted that the planning board has questions about.
We, did you want to give any feedback about the proposed evaluation of the cemetery?
Look, I mean, you know, we understand that this issue came to light based on the back of a, of a, of a restaurant menu. And, you know, look, we looked into it. We performed a, a title certification that goes back 200 years, with no mention of burial grounds, cemetery, et cetera. We've owned the property for more than 70 years, never a, a mention of it. The, the property that, that we had just discussed, the existing property, the road needed to be constructed, utilities, subsurface utilities needed to go in, no issue. So, and, and as Anthony mentioned, we're not in a, you know, in a archaeological district. So, you know, honestly, I, I just think it's a, it's a bad precedent to, to move forward with any further investigation, as, as Anthony mentioned in his report. Because again, you know, you're sort of giving credence to what are, you know, sort of baseless, baseless claims. And what does that really mean toward, to the, to the process? You know, I think it's a, it's a dangerous precedent. Again, we did our due diligence, we, we took it very seriously. But in the end, you know, there was no evidence found, no, no information to support it. So we'd, you know, we'd like you to, to accept your, your professional planner's report, and, you know, we're excited to move forward with this application. But that's, that's basically.
Do you, are you aware of any possible underground, even in a small area, to do like a, you know, cursory evaluation of, let's say, a small fragment just?
I understand. Again, you know, without, because our due diligence found no evidence of, of any potential burial grounds, other than, again, a restaurant menu, you know, we, we just think it's, it's bad precedent to, to accept that information as, as justification to move forward with, with investigations. We're, we're, you know, we just think that the information that we were able to, to compile and review sort of puts this issue to bed. And so we, you know, we want to move forward with preparing our formal site plan and submitting and going through the technical review, again, with this issue behind us, respectfully.
Did this issue come from the Historical Society?
It came from the public.
It's on the Villa Paul menu. You know, the seventeen hundreds is a long way back, but the history of this area goes far past that to the sixteen hundreds. And so I feel concerned about it still. I think when we go through CEQA, it would be interesting if you, you know, prepare to do some type of archaeological investigation just to, you know, put that issue at ease.
Respectfully, I think it's, you know, it's always a potential slippery slope, right?
So is the other way.
Well, I think there are controls in place to, you know. But again, in our site, in our case, we did a hard look, we took a hard look, we have a title certification. We've gone back aerial photography almost a hundred years. And again, we've owned the property for seventy years. And nothing has ever come up, it's been, you know, it's been constructed upon. There's, there's really nothing to support, again, we understand it's on the menu and, you know, it's out there. But we really, you know, we take pride in the fact that we did investigate this through document search and title, and we took it seriously. But in the end, there's, you know, there's nothing more than that menu at this point to support it. And we'd like to move forward. You know, and again.
If I may, you know, what I'm gonna say, you know, it is a type-one action of the CEQA, depending what's gonna engage in a CEQA review. My advice at this point would be to submit as much information at the time of CEQA. But what I'm hearing from the board is, at least this is what I'm gathering, is they're not a hundred percent on board with how I see this.
Well, normally this application wouldn't be referred to landmarks, because there's no structure, but it may be appropriate to at least have their board review this. You know, they do a literature, a literature search, they do.
Claire, we're mentioning one potential option instead of going down that road of a full-blown archaeology is at least what you're saying is a Phase One A, which isn't a dig or anything, but at least there's a initial analysis of records and maps to see. And normally then they would, you know, track or somebody would say, ah, it makes me uncomfortable, let's take it further, you know, that sort of thing. That means it's not a full-blown expense at this point, but I just, I got a caution, the applicant, we are gonna be under a CEQA review. So, you know, it is worth gonna have to make a secret determination to be comfortable.
Well, had they not done some of that already, and they could just provide that documentation.
So let's see, let's see what we have, maybe we have something that's been done already in and around this area.
And some information from the Historical Society also would be really helpful.
We will do that, we'll send that out to them, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, so pre-submission at this point, just wanna verbalize my agreement with Dennis that this issue, you know, I wouldn't say there's no additional investigation at this time, because we really don't know and we haven't seen the information that was put in. So I prepare for that, questions still are open. And the information that's provided is great, it just, I still have questions, so you should know that.
I think we've covered everything, Anthony, thank you so much for your attendance. Your motion to adopt the pre-submission conference support. Motion by Gloria. Second by Tom, all in favor, I oppose the station. And we have six yes, one absent. Anthony, where are we going?
Is Mr. Gaza? Ocean View Park.
Okay, Ocean View, that's the old map. Transfer of development rights, item twenty-two, is it item twenty-two?
Four, four, five, Gray Hill Road.
Yeah, so, here, I'll show everybody this, this was, should be on our layers here. Yeah.
So our layers show where the board approved the development section. Here's the property sitting in the corner. We did everything we're supposed to, we show where the roads go, where roads are gonna be abandoned. Then we get these applications built on them. For this, really what we're looking at is did they bring in the development rights to build on them? We don't get into location, they have clear restrictions and setbacks that are prescribed in the code.
So they're, what, to build on what of those?
So they're gonna build on this one.
Which one?
Submitted by.
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, I'll zoom in, right in the corner here.
Okay.
And so in this particular case, Joe Gaza has submitted to me his little stack of development rights. Fifty percent come from the school district, fifty percent come from outside of the school district. If you go to the bottom of page three and the top of page four, I've listed all the development rights, where they're coming from, what their values are. And then just to point out, he does get, we refer them as baby certificates. Joe Gaza's gonna get two new certificates at the end of this.
Like change?
Like little change, and we'll see them again when we're assembling another piece. It's gonna be subject to road review and compliance with the clear restrictions. So I'd recommend approval of the right to build to four forty-five.
One resolution for all the rights, or do you need two resolutions?
Nope, just one resolution.
Okay, pretty straightforward. Okay, motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, I oppose the station. We have six yes.
Okay, sure. Free to do what you need to do now.
You can go back to being chair. He took his hat off, can we get back to you?
Anthony, do you have anything else to?
No, you can do it.
Okay, so Claire, did you want?
Yeah, do you mind, but it says you have to approach out to other meetings later today. So do you mind taking an RP, is that the only one you have?
Yep, absolutely, let's do it. RP, good.
That's fourteen and sixteen.
Fourteen and sixteen.
Yeah, so there's subdivision we'll talk about in the site plans we'll talk about, okay?
Okay.
Subdivision is fourteen.
Hello, do you have your name for the record?
Sal Koko, DHC Architects.
Oh, I only have two.
I'm saying the numbering is different from what you had.
Sure. Glad to help, John. Holiday, holiday season. So this is the subdivision.
And site plan. We do sixteen and eighteen, both the subdivision and site plan now?
Yeah, but let's talk about the subdivision first, it's later, and then we'll get into the site plan details, if you don't mind. But this plan.
This isn't what I was.
This plan shows the site plan on it too, this initial one, there's three sets there.
This report covers both.
This report is for the subdivision.
Subdivision, gotcha.
Oh, that's right.
Right. Yeah, there's thirty-three of them. So it's a subdivision of two lots, it's also involving this out parcel here that is getting merged in, and then the subdivision, as you see in front of you, which is technically a three-lot cluster plan with the two parcels on the either side as an open space. And then the lot number three is proposed to be purchased through to CPF.
CPF.
They have reviewed this plan to date, and they're on board with it, so. Do you have any questions, or should I just start?
It's another, the open space parcel.
It's two open space parcels, they're in the fronts. They're labeled.
Here and here.
Yes.
Here and here.
That's gonna be held by HOA, open space?
That may even go, we don't know, we're not sure yet, it's either has to go to HOA or to the town.
Or the town, or some type of non-for-profit.
We'll figure that out.
Three is definitely for purchase by town. Three is definitely for purchase by town.
Yes, that's part of it.
That is made intention, you can never control that, but yes, that's the intention right now.
It's actually part of the secret findings.
Yeah, secret finding.
As Claire says, it ain't over till it's over, the town still has to, I don't know, I'm just.
Was there, was there a particular reason that CPF is purchasing this particular part of the property?
Yes, they are, yeah.
What's the reason for CPF, the town acquiring that?
To be very frank, it was a, it was a negotiation because of the reduction of the units to make it economically viable.
Went from a hundred and four.
Yeah, it was like a hundred, we started a hundred and forty, we were basing it on the density that was over at Saban, is that Sabanac? Yeah, Sandy Hollow, Sandy Hollow, I'm sorry. And then, then went from like a hundred, I think it was a hundred and four, Tom, and now we're down to seventy-nine, seventy-eight plus one. I always say, I always say seventy-eight plus one, because seventy-eight, one of the units is for the manager, the caretaker. So it is actually a unit, but I always say seventy-eight plus one.
And these two open space parcels are on the lot that's going to have the affordable housing?
Well, that's what's my question, whether, how they're gonna be held?
Well.
Well, the way it looks right now.
They're separate parcels, but they're gonna be held, either they have to be held by an HOA, or they're gonna have to be dedicated to the town.
Dedicated to the town, we haven't decided yet, so, you know, it might just be the easiest thing to dedicate them to the town.
Maybe.
Usually that's what you do with open space, it's not ag land.
Although you do have an HO, is there gonna be an HOA with this?
Oh, no, no.
It's rentals.
It's rentals.
So we'll probably end up, I, I, I just, I haven't thought it through, my guess is they'll probably go to the town, because it's, it's, what? Usually the imperative for holding onto ownership with open spaces with ag reserve parcels is a farmer's gonna farm them.
Most wooded parcels.
So most wooded parcels, I just don't, I haven't talked it through with the client, but my thinking, you know, most, I can't believe, I can't remember the last time I was involved in a cluster subdivision where the open space that wasn't ag didn't go to the, didn't just go to the town. Well, it's, you know.
But right now, it's part of lot one.
Yeah.
Yes, because post-subdivision two, in the eyes of the health department, it's a five-lot subdivision.
Yes, yeah.
But in our eyes, it's a three-lot subdivision with two open space parcels.
And then since the town, the CPF is gonna buy a piece of it, that actually has to be a separate parcel as well, because it has to be dedicated to the carer.
And lot three is going to be left undeveloped. The CPF purchase lot.
Yes, well, yeah, it would be subject to the strictures of the CPF, which I think essentially say you have to leave it undeveloped. I think the only funds that have ever been used for CPF for an active use or some, or like some of the marina users and stuff like that. But when they purchase vacant real property, I think usually CPF just leaves it. There may be some.
Girl scout camp.
Yeah, yeah.
Hampton Bay, things like that, but I think it's probably then put into the transfer, right?
I'm trying to think of exceptions, the one I think of is the one in North Sea, like Conscience Point, it's an active marina there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I guess that.
Christine, how does, how does that get arranged?
Sometimes for a non-for-profit.
With the CPF purchase, to determine how the property is then managed going forward?
They would probably approach the town or CPF with stewardship, stewardship agreement?
You're talking about how, who's gonna manage the property?
Well, the question, the question was, oh, is this, this is wooded now, CPF is purchasing it, is it gonna maintain to be wooded? How is that determined at the transaction?
Once the town owns it, it's up to the town board.
CPF has specific uses, if everyone uses, not, it has to be specific, things governed by CPF legislation.
How's that work, Christine?
Well, typically, these parcels have, when they've been purchased, they've been passive recreation.
Can I just ask a question of counsel?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just trying to answer.
Yeah, unless they wanted to, unless they were gonna do something other than what it is now, if they wanted to do something other than what it is now, they would go to the town board and they would speak to them about what they would like to see there if it's the same as what somebody else is proposing. CPF, yeah, CPF advisory, Jackie would probably bring it to the advisory board to get their feedback, and then they would go to the town board and see if they liked it, and if so, they would probably discuss it.
But it also has very specific things that they can do with CPF.
They can't, they couldn't put a municipal park lot in there.
So the answer to your question is, if it's wooded and CPF purchases, it would have to go through a review process if they wanted to do something else.
So Claire, can you highlight, take us through the highlights of the report?
Of course, so we talked about the lot there, it was subject to a change zone to create the MF PRD designation for the seventy-nine units, type-one action. The finding statement was adopted November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the adoption of zone change was in November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. So the second page, I showed the area, which we have up here. Bottom of page two is the description, which we just discussed. And then the standard plan, which is fourteen lots for the application, and then the cluster plan, as you see in front of you. It is minor subdivision, it was, of course, a type-one action. So prior to making a determination, this is the pre-app for the subdivision, so there's no action here, this is the document, we're gonna report the subdivision. But prior to making an action with either the subdivision or the set plan, you will need to adopt the finding statements of your own with this application. So that is, I transferred that to you just about a couple days ago, but it is online, the whole secret documents are online, DEIS, FPIS. If you have any questions, let me know. My recommendation is that at the end of the day, for both the site plan, which will come first, and the subdivision is that you adopt the finding statement that the town board did as your own. I think that they did a very thorough review in this case, but definitely take a look at it, I want you to be comfortable with this, and, you know. I think these are, at the end of the day, we're laying out the subdivision, and we're gonna do the site plan, which is all falls under site plan standards, in my opinion, too. Comformance of the comprehensive plan, that was a determination made by the town board, of course, and they changed the zoning. But part of the comprehensive plan is the affordable housing component, which is the seventy-nine units on the property. I'll have, I'm gonna look at the housing plan a little bit closer and see if there's any more language that we might incorporate to the site plan standards for this at that point. Park requirements, in this case, affordable housing is not subject to park requirements. Of course, there's existing commercial sites in the front, that is not subject to park. The only parcel that would be is lot number three, because at the end of the day, you're creating a conforming parcel that if they built one house, that would have a one-house park requirement, park requirement, that would be the flat fee of twenty-five hundred. So that's my determination in this case. The public comments, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, they would conserve a lay-up preservation associated with the subdivision. And the following comments received during the provided hearing, there was comment period to date, the dates, we're at date twenty-eighth on the comment period, but I wanted to get this before you, because the deadline is January ninth on this, we won't have another hearing to discuss this. The comments were, the entire property should be preserved through CPF, and also the comments received.
Is the public aware that lot three was being purchased by CPF?
That was part of the proposal.
That was part of the proposal.
I think that was described at the public hearing also.
Okay.
Not only was it part of the proposal, but it was rolled into the secret findings, okay, so it was totally transparent.
Okay, should I go on with the referrals?
Sure, yep.
So the referrals were made to the various agencies. To date, we have responses from conservation, park prevention, and highway, which are attached, generally approving from the primary marshal and the housing department. Kind of, the conservation department said, one, there are no town regulated freshwater wetlands within its feet. Two, not considering any heat-related grade modifications in site photography impacting the extensive well drainage sands and gravel lend themselves to well establishment of a naturalized drainage area rather than an engineered fence representation basis. As such, detailed drainage drawings and specifications need to be developed and submitted with the aim of preserving as much natural vegetation as is practical. Number three, while the planned residential development plan has resulted in a loss of highly valued coastal pine there and warrants, the conservation board is generally supportive of the open space consideration and consideration. Four, going to see plans need to be forward for review and comments. And then, so these are my recommendations, I'm gonna make an additional official note about the open space, either to be an HOA or a town, just put it to the town, so I'll make that as one of the notes. I'm saying that the ver plan is the PRD with four point three acres of open space, a hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred fourteen square feet, representing twenty-five percent of the end up PRD area. Comments of the town engineer, they're not being raised. So the application was deemed complete with the town engineer saying he had enough information, but we had not heard from them. My recommendation to the applicant is to reach out to him in the next month and shoot up the, any recommendations either with the subdivision and the site plan application, to do that, for any determinations.
Claire, the report at the top, it says pre-application report.
Yeah.
We have an application also in, or is it free?
For a final or for the site plan?
For, so here we're looking at the subdivision, pre-application report, have they put in the application, or?
For the final application? For the final application? Not with us, yes, with the, with the health department.
Okay.
With the health department.
Yeah.
But the applications we filed.
Yeah, with the health department.
Yeah. But I can't, one of the constituent pieces of the final applications, the health department.
Are there anything else in the referrals, Claire, for the fire prevention?
Uh, no, it was a general comments. They didn't have any, uh, specific requirements, fire marshal.
Okay.
Just the driveways, um, the public service water mains and fire hydrants, proposed lot number one and two. And I think, um, the site's gonna have some fire suppression, uh, with the site plan standards, so we'll read those comments.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if it's where.
Yeah. They'll be more specific with the site plan, yeah.
So let's jump to page five, then the, your recommendations.
Yep. So I've been, not, I was on number two with the town engineer.
Oh, okay.
Um, number three is, um, lot number one is the seventy nine metro unit known as NFP holding, the site's currently undergoing site plan review. Lot number two is the car wash and laundromat, the site is undergoing the site plan review.
Has that been filed, the lot two, the laundromat?
Yep, that site plan is also part, party of this application. So when you had the hearing on November fourteenth, it was for the two applications. That is more like, you know, you put the other hat on and it's like cleanup, right, trying to make it as safe as possible.
Right.
Look at the lighting, those kinds of things. So the staff report deals with both site plans, so we'll talk about that.
So, but it, it's a separate application of the other.
It's technically a separate application, yes. Um, and then the subject site identified as the CPF priority property, identified lot number three as supposed to be created for potential purpose, purchase of the town CPF. Park fee, uh, type one action, I just refer to the comments above. Um, so one, one real comment here is that the design lot line configuration is a lot of little meets and bounds, and I think they should be just very uniform in design, just straightened up. And then makes it easier for attorneys, too, so. So just straightened out to be whatever is.
Is that for the CPF lot one?
Actually, it's a little bit space.
Yeah, all, all the lots are kind of like, like little tiny meets and bounds. I think it could be straightened out to be a little.
Mr. Bennett, do you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, I, I really would. That's, I, I mean, I think, I don't have any problem. That's the only issue that I have with this, uh, you know, Claire's very thorough, uh, report, and it's not, that, this straight, straight lot lines thing is not coming from Claire, it's coming from CPF. And it reminds me of, uh, you know, that, uh, the guy out of Greek mythology, Procrustes, who would invite people to his house, and he said, there's a perfect bed for you here. Uh, and, um, but what he would do is if you didn't fit on the bed, he would stretch you or cut off, cut off a part of your body. Uh, and what it, it's, 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 you're enforcing uniformity without regard to any sort of natural variation. Uh, we've really worked really, really hard on this pro- property. There's a significant grade change across the property, including a large previously cleared area, which will be partially filled and then utilized for a natural drainage area. We worked very hard, uh, with the grading configuration to create a four acre naturally wooded CPF area and twenty five percent open space, which was accomplished. Straighten out the lines will then be a mixture of natural wooded area and regraded area that will be replanted, which I think violates the letter of the town board resolution, which stated that they wanted to acquire woodlands. So I've been involved in all sorts of real property transfers over the last forty two years, and yeah, things aren't always done in straight lines. And these, uh, um, these meets and bounds descriptions should, should follow the, the topography based, based upon, to keep this area wooded, based upon this very, 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 very hard, hard work, work for an engineered, um, site plan that accomplishes, and that accomplishes everything. What's, what's, does it, does, why does CPF care whether or not?
I actually don't think it's that big of a deal. I mean, this is even.
Well, our engineers, an engineer is saying that it is. I have anything, yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, like, see this line here, to meet, to your eye, that looks like a straight line, right? That, I, just looking real quickly, that involves one, two, three, four, five things.
So what?
Five meets and bounds. Why, why isn't it just, I just don't understand why it's not straight.
I, I, I guess to, to somebody who does real property transfers all the time, this is absolutely nothing. Everybody will transfer property in straight lines all the time. This is, you know, this is not out west where you have quadrants and everything. I, I, every other deed that I look like has, this is, this is not an unusual, uh, meets and bounds description. And we're doing it, I, I'm not, I'm not doing it just to be stubborn. We've designed this so that the town board, which wanted vegetate, you know, existing natural vegetation area preserved, is being preserved.
So you're maybe talking about two different things, because I see what you're talking about, or on between proposed lot one, you could see on the little, um, image here that it does follow the contour lines, which makes sense, but you're talking, you're talking about along the edge of lot.
The open space parcels.
One. Yeah, along the open space parcels, right, which, those are little adjustments.
Well, the open space parcels are up to you. I'm, we're talking about the, uh, the northerly line of the CPF parcel.
Right, so she's talking about something different.
I don't think that's that bad. I mean, that's like five here. This is, this is the little things here, like, just to me, it could like, just.
Right.
But again, that's, that's, we're following contours and, and we're doing some cut and fill in there. We're trying to preserve as much of the, of the, of the naturally existing vegetation as possible, which is what you're, I mean, I know we're not necessarily in the act of protection, obviously, that's true, are we?
No.
But you're talking about.
But I mean, you're, the whole, the whole idea is to preserve naturally existing vegetation, and everyone, I've been hearing for thirty five years, that naturally existing vegetation is superior to re-vegetated vegetation, which makes sense, cause the understory is virgin and all that stuff like that. That's what we're trying to do here. And the mere fact that somebody's got, gotta worry, and I, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me for conveyances, period, uh, periods, or setting up meets and bounds descriptions on the covenants. I, I don't understand why, it's, 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 it's what we, as lawyers do with all the time.
This is the map that underwent the secret review of the town. So I don't know that.
No, it is not. It's been changed.
Of what they? Do they have, they have changed?
It's been changed, yeah. Yeah, it, it was, it was verbal, the change with the, the four lots and things like that. So this is the first, you know, time a board is actually reviewing the map.
My understanding is that CPF is concerned that they won't have a straight line to manage.
I, I could have a, a, a concern in that they'll, if there's a lot of wiggle room, there's potential for the development to encroach on the CPF plan. And I think that's, that would be my issue.
Yeah, but it can be fenced. Somebody get a surveyor out there, shoot the line, put stakes up, and that's where the fence goes.
Fence and sand.
Usually do a split river.
Yeah, so against both lot, both, both the open space and the, the potential purchase possible. Okay?
Yeah. Sort of delineate it, yeah. All right, so that's not really an issue. We're gonna strike that.
Thank you. That's my only issue.
That's the only issue.
It's not bad.
Kinda give some more to it, for a minute. Need to touch.
Okay, here we go. We'll, we'll get to the next.
No, I, I think there's.
Let's think positive.
And that one, that one was not coming.
Yeah, no, I know, we know that.
Okay, ready for the next, the next round?
So this is, that covers our subdivision.
No, the, oh, the, um.
January nine.
The deadline's January nine.
The deadline's January nine, however, the, the comment period is technically only until Monday, so, yeah.
So we're moving to the site plan aspect of it now?
Yes, it's the site plan.
So you're, you're not adopting this, but you just wanted to get it all out on the table, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the board prefers, um, the group application, let's see it at all times.
Okay, great.
This is D one.
We're not gonna open the plan with the set down.
Is there a, a?
I can open one here, so let's do that.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah.
It's an irrelevant page, right?
Otherwise, we'll get buried.
Yeah, the site plan.
We're the site plan.
And then the, the.
But I can do.
He's Florian.
You can find it on the works. A little bit on that little.
Yeah, that's, that's lot one, and then I can put on lot.
So this is lot one, right?
This is lot number one.
And there's another, a lot six.
This is lot two. I can put a lot two on your side, that better.
Go lot one first.
I think lot one is.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's the major site plan, then we can go to lot two. Yeah, let's do lot number.
Claire?
Well, I need to do reports. I put little maps in there to report itself, so I might help you. So lot number one is the seventy nine, um, units affordable housing that's accessed is gonna come off of the side of the road.
Excuse me.
And then the proposed area, I'm sorry, is actually eight point nine eight acres based on the subdivision, so this will be lot number one. Um, and then I'll talk about lot number two later. Um, so with regard to secret again, um, before an action on the site plan, you'll have to adopt, um, uh, your own findings statements. And as before, I recommend you adopt the findings statements prepared by the town board in this case. Um, the concerns from the public on November fourteenth, um, with regard to land preservation would prefer the whole property to be preserved. Concerns for the overall population of the area, and over climbing schools, concerns of traffic, and concerns of sanitary waste for the car wash. Written comments received, um, to date, during the thirty day written comment period, opinions that the single family zoning should have remains, and the property should be entirely preserved through CPF purchase. Um, in this case, comments were, um, gross effects, and they are.
Claire, may I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Um, I believe the sanitary waste from the car wash is going to be taken in by the new system, i.e. system work.
I don't think so.
They said it was a closed loop, right? Cause I asked that.
Yeah, so I'm remembering that, it was sort of not an issue.
Yeah. It's a closed loop for the car wash.
Yeah.
Um, the sanitary waste for the commercial is going to be, be, uh, incorporated in the sewage treatment plant for lot number one. Just the sanitary waste. I don't think it has anything to do with the car wash or the laundromats.
No.
That, there, that waste.
We're not running the gray water through the onsite wastewater system.
And the gray water for the, for the.
That's the gray waters for the.
For the.
For the car wash. And it's a closed loop thing anyways.
And then it just gets pumped out.
Excuse me?
It just gets pumped out, I think.
It, it, it's, 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 the car wash system has been approved by all regulatory authorities.
The gentleman that was here explaining.
Oh, what, what about the laundromat?
Excuse me?
The laundromat.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry, the laundromat, I think. It's, it's, there's no, we're not putting any of that gray water into the, uh, the onsite. It wouldn't be appropriate.
Well, where, how is it being handled now?
It's handled now, what, what's going on now, I don't know, but I know that Strebels over the year has continually, uh, changed to conform to the required, uh, health department standards, both the car wash and the, and the laundry.
It's not under our review.
It's not under your review anyway.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to the, the public comments.
Oh, the public is gonna say what they're gonna say.
Yeah, but I think we should have answers.
Okay, ask a question.
You can't all.
So on the record, the car wash is a closed loop system, right? So that's what was said before?
Yeah, I think they all are these days. I don't know that you can have anything but that.
So Claire, could you, uh, hold up for a second?
Yeah.
There are two or three bedroom units here, so clearly some families gonna live here, and there was a comment about the schools. Was there some conversation with the school district about what the anticipated number of kids will be?
Yeah, that was all done in the secret review process, which led to a, a full-blown, I don't know, Claire, you haven't, you hadn't heard Claire before, there was an actual full-blown environmental review under the state of, under CARG, scoping sessions, draft environmental impact statement, hearings on it, file statements.
Yeah, yeah. So it's addressed, so it has been addressed?
It has been addressed. There is a number that they anticipate of, uh, impacting the school district.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, the school district was given a referral due process, uh, to, I think, two, two, twice in the process, and, um, I don't think they had any comments.
Right.
To my mind, but I can look in the FPIS, that's where the comments would be.
Well, that would be something you'd wanna review as, or we should review during our review of the documents that they've had.
Not me finding statements.
You sent a link to that.
Yes, I sent you the actual finding statements, so you can have the documents, but yes, any back, it's, then I gave you the website that has everything, the DEIS, FPIS.
So we could, we have all of that information to go back if we have, if any of us have questions.
Exactly. But to your point, I'm gonna put some notes in here about the, the car wash being closed system, and I do know that the sanitary waste for the commercial is, is going to be, um, connected to the lot number one, um, sewage treatment plant.
So the commercial, the commercial aspects other than the car wash and the laundromat from the Strebels side is gonna come to this?
Yes.
And this is, since we're, we're doing a site plan for both lots.
Mm-hmm.
Do we not have the ability to question whether or not the, the existing stuff meets current sanitary code?
Well, it's not within your, it might, it's not within your review, it's not being what you're asked to be done.
That's what I just asked, Claire said, yes.
The only way it can come up is in the secret process, and the secret process, there's been a full-blown, uh, secret process here. No, I, I would object to that.
Counsel?
It, it should come through the secret process, if there's an issue.
The information's gonna be in, in the, uh, the EIS, FPIS, and the findings.
So we have the ability to question it, it just, it may have been answered.
We received that link.
Yes.
We received that link, I think, yesterday, from you.
I actually sent it.
Couple days ago?
I sent it with the.
You sent it, I did, I, I did not have.
I promise you.
I saw something, I clicked on it this morning.
I didn't, remember when K and I were fighting about, you know?
I clicked on it this morning, that's what.
Yeah, but I did send it to you again, so.
Okay, the second one.
Yes.
Thank you.
I wanted to leave you hanging with that information. Um, should I go to the referrals?
Yeah.
So the fire marshal, this is for lot number one, um, describe the application, said commercial not to be emergency vehicle access, street numbers and apartment numbers, dumpster shall be enclosed, deep access required, fire apparatus access road should be required, proposed tree planting shall not obstruct the access road and require high clearance for fire apparatus, vehicle impact protection shall be provided for gas meters located in the requirements of the code. Planties around buildings shall not obstruct access to utilities and fire department connection for sprinkler systems. Green foot clearance shall be maintained around all utilities and fire department connection. Plan includes the installation of public service water mains and fire hydrants. Additional fire life safety concerns addressed during formal building review.
And that would be where sprinklers would be reviewed?
Yes, there are buildings that can be sprinkled, and there is fire hydrants proposed around the site. Um, the highway department had no recommendations for lot number one. Um, so with regard to, um, lot number two, that's the comments related to the curb class, and we'll get to that on this, this lot number two. And with regards to the ARB for the design, the project, um, they had indicated their approval, and so I do wanna talk about the design, I don't know if we wanna do it now, or do it as we go through the site plan standards.
The, the ARB did announce that they were gonna do that, I, I mean, ultimately it's your approval. I would just caution if, yeah, if you're gonna do something different than the ARB, the way I read the code, you have a majority plus one requirement on that.
I did give them the, the allegations on the picture, um, there is this significant block run in the front, right? It's more than that, right? You get the fifty feet, and it's, actually, it's more like seventy five, eighty.
It's trying to have visibility from the road, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially have the open space, which means whatever.
Mm-hmm, right, exactly. Right. So I could, that's good, obviously, maintain that.
It's a hundred and twenty five.
Hundred and twenty five feet. One. To the building?
Yeah.
Okay, right, no, I'm just talking about the.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, um, it's giving a sign, it's about the background, you know?
Haven't gotten it.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, okay.
Probably some identification sign.
Right, so there leaves a little area here that might be yours.
Yeah, I'll still have to comply.
So yeah, so that the elevations are in front of you, did you have any comments, or did you feel, uh obviously this long building is the most visible, and then they do have a community building. Which is this elevation, right, would be the most visible one?
Oh, building A, yeah.
Building A?
I'm gonna put that. That's building C, the smaller buildings in the back.
Could you hold it up so all of us could see it?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's much better, thank you.
That's the room front.
Well, that's facing actually the parking.
Oh, okay.
So what's the back of it?
Can I show it solar?
Showing solar, yay.
Yeah, it will be solar, um, it's really not much different, you can see a portion here at the back, that's, there's there's uh patios and terraces in the back.
Is this building A?
This is building A, this is.
That's still, that's still the parking outside.
That's in front.
Portion of this right here.
I was asking, what's the back of this looking?
One?
We all have that in elevation, we don't have that in rendered.
Oh, so, um, but it shows it in the packet, right, in the elevation?
In elevation, yeah. Four oh one, or four hundred? It's the same kind of triple gable, except patio doors instead of entry doors.
So this bottom, this bottom view is the, on that page you're holding up is the back, the front, the.
It's very, very similar.
South Country Road side?
Yeah.
The building?
Yep.
Very similar to that?
Yeah, the same, same color scheme. Yep.
You see parking already communal, or is it, or you can have designated spots to each, for each?
I don't believe it's assigned, I think it's communal.
Communal, okay. Part of our discussion about the charging stations.
There, there is a charging station, I thought, but this is important, the five, spoken to five parkings, five charging stations. And we'll show them on the final plan, but the number of five charging stations, as long as we talk about solar and.
Yeah, the solar's good.
Couple at each building. A couple at each building? Uh, five. There'll be sprinkled throughout the site. But but they'll, they'll be for the tenants.
Yeah.
I think we had some discussion and wanted to, wanted to concern, particularly included in mind was the number of parking spaces provided for, let's call it eighty units, or seventy-nine units, right? Because you have a sprinting of one, two, and three bedrooms, and previous versions I had, I had looked at how many bedrooms we had totals throughout the site, or did we have that number or not? Um, you know, and the expectation of how many people would cause, because, you know, we're in a location here where, like most of these, there's no public transportation, so you have one person, you know, couple, we probably have three cars, three bedrooms, or we have five, four, or five cars, do we have enough parking on site for every, um, you know, for, you know.
I think one of our other questions was whether or not it was gonna be cars, or some sort of larger vehicles.
Do you think it's overparked?
Sorry?
Do you think it's overparked?
No, I think it might be under.
Okay, well, we need the code, uh, and there was some suggestion there about land banking, which I I don't.
It's nice to see, I mean, it's nice to see the code, but you know, there are times when the code, like, you know, we had a previous application where they're talking about, look, we may not need all these parks, so we're gonna land bank some, but you need the code.
No, I think.
If you have, if you have too many cars on this side, there's gonna spill over on South Country Road and the Jason roads, and parking isn't really allowed on on private road, on on town roads.
No.
There's twelve units with free beds, and there's two and a half stalls for those units, forty units.
So for a three bedroom, for a three bedroom structure.
Yeah, two and a half, two and a half parking spaces, and then all the two bedrooms, forty of them, have two stalls per unit. So this is a typo in here, it says twenty-seven three bedroom.
Yeah, that's a typo.
Okay.
That's me.
It's twelve.
It's twelve, yeah.
Thanks.
I did the calculation right, but it's.
Yep, yep, yep.
Or exceeding the amount required.
Exceeding the amount required, yeah.
Yes, so.
I understand that you're saying that, even if you meet or exceed slightly, my my comment is that it's fine to do that, but the reality of how many people who have, if they have cars versus the code requirement, um, you know, how do we handle that? Because we are not in a, you can't go and take the train or the bus, step out there and do that.
I think it's tough, I don't, I my, I guess my position would be.
No, we're just saying with the reality of how many people, how many, how many students they expect from this by code, going to the school district, is that how many actually show up at the school district? And and there's been a lot of up, built construction, which is exceeded with no, with no um consequence to the development.
Yeah, I mean, that's been one of the things we've talked about, is that we should, we we as a town need to look at, after build out, what was the actual result? Because the, what we're using as as a potential may not in fact be reality.
I think you're in a bit of a bind, if I've met the code requirement for parking, indeed I've exceeded it. Because that's the specification in the code, and that's what your site plan tells you you should require. Uh, but it's not like, it's not like we're here for a variance where, you know, you can start adding conditions that are outside of code sections because I'm here for a variance, I'm here for a site plan.
I understand.
I mean, I'm, I, and I guess I would address it with legislation, but right now, we we, I don't, I don't know that your site, your planetary site plan authority gives you the authority to say, I know you indeed exceed the code, but we want you to do more part.
John, do you have a provision for visitor parking?
For what?
Visitor or guest parking?
I think that's calculated.
Is that in our calculations, so we do the calculation?
That's part of the number is determined.
That's just, uh, that's just the way that the code is.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, I mean, just as like it's boots and suspenders, but you could also just covenant that you'll keep all your, compliant with the code, you'll keep all parking on site. Notwithstanding anything else.
Well, if if the area is outside of the site, is posted on parking, then I can't park there. But if it's not, I could be from Mars and park there. I mean, it it you can't tell somebody that they can't park on the street unless you tell everybody that they can't park on the street.
Parking regulations is something that they wanna look at as it moves along. But I I I exceed the parking requirements, sir.
I think what uh what sounds like to me is that the post review is really important to see if in fact the regulations do meet what the actual, the actual result.
But even if you do that and it doesn't meet, as.
We have to really, yeah.
Code says that, you know.
We have to really start looking at that, and then come back to the zoning board and say, you know what?
You're gonna be seeing a lot of of this sort of development, more and more.
Yeah. Yeah.
In fact, in the western hamlets, you're seeing a lot of this, you know, in the San Martin, the San Martin Beach, in the fire.
I mean, the town board. Yeah.
And there is that conundrum that you have, where you don't provide enough parking for, you know, let's be realistic, I understand what you're saying, you meet the code requirements, you exceed the code requirement.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's not an issue, I I'm just saying, I think you have.
But there's no recourse unless you change the code to say that, you know. So that, what does the code say for single family homes in terms of how many parking spots you provide for a three bedroom or four bedroom home?
A four bedroom home, three, three spots. A five bedroom home, four spots, that's with a single, that's a single family residence, though.
I can tell you.
It's one less than the number of bedrooms, yeah.
Yeah, but then typically you have a driveway, you know, and and, you know, a two, two gar, a two car garage and a driveway that can take four more cars if you need it. So it kind of stays on site, for the most part.
There's a larger issue, and I was just hearing discussion on FBR this morning about how the overarching need for housing that that things like parking and and certain zoning impediments should are, is real pushback, and this is coming from from progressive groups, certainly more of a national debate, that parking and some of these constraints should not be used to impede a badly needed housing.
The 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 challenge here is you can't get anywhere without a car, when you're, when you're talking about urban development. That's a lot of where the overparking requirements are probably not appropriate, because you can walk, you can take a taxi, you can get a bus or a subway.
Right.
Where we live, in general, unless you're a marathon runner, you ain't getting anywhere without a car.
I'm just restating what the national, the national discussion is about.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, but that's.
Dennis, if I may, what has, what has happened, and and as as local folks out here, we've seen it that the increasing tightening of these sort of restrictions, the net effect of it is you have exclusionary zoning, no question about it. All of this stuff, historic preservation, you would call exclusionary.
C C P F fund.
What?
C P F fund.
C P F fund is exclusionary, there's no question about it. But thirty years ago, people say, oh, buy all this up, and I would look at them and say, where are your kids gonna live?
Yeah, that's what's happening.
I do have, I do have another parking question. Are the parking spaces big enough for something bigger than a car? If this is affordable housing, might they be tradespeople, and can they park their trade vehicles?
Well, they can be on a trail, they can park their trail, it's commercial parking.
This is gonna be privately managed, they typically do not allow.
No, I'm asking, I'm raising that as as an issue.
Yeah, no, it's it's an issue, yeah. Would like to mention that, because one of the things is we drill down, you know, there are two standards, nine by twenty, ten by eighteen.
Yep.
I'm a proponent of the ten by eighteen, because cars are bigger than they used to be.
But lengthwise also, because like, no, the.
Once they get, yeah, but once they get in the space.
The hitch tongue sticking out behind it, you need a, you need almost a eleven foot.
Once they're in the space, they're in the space, they're.
Yeah.
But um, I tend to, I don't know how you folks have laid this out.
It's nine by twenty.
The nine by twenty, okay.
The other remedy, that is, we're just go back to cutting our own laws, but.
That will also solve more traffic.
Or have none, like, like, I don't have a law.
Everybody, I hope you heard me, but.
Artificial too, because of.
Anecdotally, none, none of these privately managed facilities allow any type of commercial. As the nine, assuming your management covers the control.
Excuse me?
It's not gonna be landscape controllers down there, they'll be prohibited, but. If you're nine by twenty, you're nine by twenty, again, it's.
Especially ten by eighteen, you're even.
Big, very big volumes, parking guidelines, and we could dig very deep, a lot of these guidelines were established by international, I T E.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And their calculations were done in the seventies, eighties, and nineties. I've been to, you know, seminars about, you know, how does this get in your town code? Well, you're, you're basing on I T E calculations, what you've done, you know, thirty years ago, forty years ago. Dynamics have changed a lot, but those, those ways of developing the standards haven't changed, so it's a, it's a pretty deep subject.
Yeah, but also remember, people, if I'm driving those big oak Buicks and Chryslers, they were big and fat, and it's the same car.
Yeah, but then every, every, every child didn't have a car, or people didn't have three cars because they can afford it, I have the same.
So we've got the solar, we've got the charging stations, what else have we got here? Put it to bed, so to speak.
Kind of go through the issues a little bit here.
Yep.
So, um, we talked about the parking, I mean, part of that, I was just gonna say, George, is that there are absolute track studies, did you take a look at it at all? I can, I can double check that.
That's what I was clicking on and looking when I said, I looked at the link you sent.
Yeah, so I can see what they had, uh, they just. Is that what happened?
Oh, yes.
Before we forget, we're okay with the elevations?
You gotta move it most every five minutes.
I mean, I think that's great.
I did, I actually did move it, but I think it just says you're gonna, it's gonna close you.
It didn't like your touch.
I just wanted to get the sense, everyone's okay with the elevation?
Yes, I I like it.
Yes, that is a big, that's a big one.
Yeah, that's a good one.
That's okay.
Um, I made some recommendations with landscaping for the main one, um, just, they actually use native trees and sprays and plantings, which is good.
Yeah.
But the, there's some elms proposed, and I think that the, the disease is pretty good, so.
Such, such elm disease?
I suggest something, but they, there's plenty of trees for them to choose from, um.
Where are you in your?
I'm at, uh, five C.
Pete, Pete drives D.
So, sorry, before we go further, and kind of related to this, but so, I'm glad to see I'm driving into, to down along twenty-four, there's like, some, I'm not sure which
Yeah.
which agency came through and cut down a lot of the dead pine trees, and this, on this property, you know, what's, proposes the open space and C P F here, there's like, you know, and a ton of um dead trees that are dangerous, so is that, can this be tied in somewhere that, you know, they will cut down those trees as a safety before?
The pine trees?
Yeah.
Everyone's telling me if they're, the targets are the beetles, you're supposed to leave them there.
No, you, you cut them down and leave them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if they're, if they're along the road and they're a hazard and they may fall on a person or a structure, then they should be removed pursuant to the necessary
But.
authorization given by the town, often a memo to the environment. However, if it's in the middle of the open space, it should be left because it does provide habitat for cavity roosting birds and bats.
Okay. Well, then there's definitely some along South Country Road and along Collin Lane.
So that that should be addressed with the highway superintendent?
But they're on private property, not on, not within the right of way, you know, so that's, that's.
I'll put a note on those, the natural, in the natural area.
Leave them.
Because once you cut them down, the the beetles will die, I think, and they won't.
Tower shock to it.
If the tree's already dead, there are no.
I was gonna say, but I'm twenty-four.
There are no living beetles.
But I've had people cut trees down around the dead ones to prevent the beetles from continuing to move to new places.
It depends on on what's happening, yeah, that might be a possibility.
So, uh, are we on page six then?
Yeah, it's to six, um, so cultural feature, the pavement, we need a town engineer, I do mention, um, that they have sidewalks through the whole thing, and then there's a walking trail around it, so it's, um, energy lighting, it's very good, um, just the LED, they don't have the specifications, and we wanna make sure it's twenty-seven hundred, and the flame poles are ten foot tall, so that's very good. Uh, the facades, we've already talked about, drainage, um, we definitely need a town engineer on this. I talk about, I'm gonna add about the car wash being a closed loop under public utilities, um, so I'll add that language. No public address system, um, the handicap spaces, I just have to add the number in for that. And then, um, obviously, this is residential development, um, we should address any of the standards under that. Energy conservation will add the reference to the five charging stations, and solar is being included, is there a number of where the solar is going, is it, um, two buildings, or all buildings, I can tell you here?
Uh, I think it's just the total amount that's calculated, and I'm not sure exactly what the final layout is, but we're definitely doing solar to reach a certain level of, uh.
Are you using heat pumps on these, do you know?
It should be an all electric system.
All?
That's probably heat pumps, hopefully it not just baseboard resistance heating.
Heat pumps? Right.
It'll be heat pumps, just split unit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's do the ordinary.
That's sort of the, sounds like that is the best that we can build right, with right now.
Yeah.
From the cost of the environmental standpoint.
Yeah, it's high performance system.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And you'll just give us the amount of kilowatts that the solar will.
Um, we have that information, I just don't have it.
Yeah. Yeah, and how is that, how is that solar going to be applied? In other words, is that gonna be, uh, will there be individual apartment heaters, or how will?
I think it will cover the common areas.
Common areas.
Yeah.
Parking lots, lighting, the area lighting.
Car wash potential, maybe.
Well, I think with, at part of the application, we should know how many kilowatts and what it's gonna cover.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's something you should readily be, be able to provide us.
We have that.
Um, I can mention the cross access, because it's come out through site to the south, um, I mean, now, now I'm getting to lot number two, I'm gonna, we'll get to that. Um, I think we've got for lot number one, that's kind of the end, um.
I did, I did have to talk.
So there is some, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I, cross access doesn't make any sense here, you've got residential.
Do you wanna make, do you wanna finish lot number one first?
Oh, I, it's, it looked like you were mixing them both.
No, no.
No.
She wants to close out the lot one.
Yeah, I definitely will.
Yeah, yeah, let's finish up, let's, first I have one more.
So just as a general comment to that, I don't know if it could be addressed by a town engineer or in general. So I know the site pretty well, I live just across the road on Dover Drive, uh, we walk down Collin and around this all the time. Um, so I understand the elevation differences from the west side where you have Mansa dude built up and where the low spot is, but I, I did a quick review of this, Phil, I think the plans a few months ago, and. You know, we've been also trying to, in, in developments, to retain some of the larger natural trees on, on site of the development. So I know we have, we're preserving a lot of things in the perimeter, but the way this, this development, and I could be wrong, you can talk to engineers about it, it's, it's kind of a cut and fill balance between, cut and fills, you don't have to take much of the site, including you.
Because it's highly disturbed.
But that's what, what, well, it's hard to say, but there's still a, there's still a lot of very mature oak tree vegetation in the central area.
That's true.
And, um, it, it'd be good, I think, to, some of the areas where you're looking to have, you know, grass areas, if you could retain some of your larger oak trees, for example, if I do a shade. Would that mean, that'd mean then identifying where the trees are, maybe change it around the elevation, you, you design a little bit to incorporate that. Um, even the stormwater, you know, you, you, everything is being piped from all of the site to that one recharge basin that you have.
Probably as much as anything, a cost factor and a maintenance factor.
Do I?
Yeah, well, yeah, when you're re-doing recharge, you're suggesting recharge and, uh, you know, recharge basins as opposed to, you know.
You're proposing recharge basin.
No, you're suggesting, you know, uh.
I'm suggesting that possibly, if you could look at localized, some localized rain gardens, where you're taking water from the roof, for example, and piping other stuff down to a smaller recharge basin.
You'd have more room for parking, so.
I mean, I think, I think I'd like to start, see, from all the gardens coming before the board now, a more emphasis, you know, we, we talk about the, you know, the solar roof, the, the, all of the other environmental thing, but the stormwater part of it is, we traditionally, for decades, have been, that's, that's throwing into some fifteen foot drains and, and leach down to the groundwater, right? But there's a lot of stuff that you can do with localized, where you can put in a rain garden, become the feature.
I was, yeah, it, it makes it pretty.
Well, George, the rain garden is one thing, but actual leaching structures.
Sorry?
The, the rain guards are one thing, but actual leaching structures, localizing leaching structures as opposed to doing one large, what we used to call in the old days, a sub, it starts, the, the cost factor starts really getting involved. If I'm putting all these concrete, uh, rings in the ground and loc- localizing the recharge, it starts becoming much more expensive and.
Yeah, but say what, what, green, green gardens, is that?
Well, that's a different story, that, that's a great.
Well, no, you can't just put a rain garden by itself, if you're feeding something eventually, you have, is gonna go excess, so it takes, probably, it can handle without feeding any direct into the groundwater, you can handle probably eighty to ninety percent of your small rainfalls. Without, without leaching directly into the ground or through the stuff. So typically, rain garden would be, whatever you put it, you put it, drainage basin anyway, so that, would it set six inches above?
We have a large retention.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that instead of having a large retention basin, piping everything out there, can you do some local, where you have open space areas and, and lawn areas, if, if is it possible to modify that size? By taking some of the smaller areas where you have roof drainage, drainage coming off, for example, um, and putting some smaller rain gardens throughout the site to, to take that drainage. And then feed from those for extremely heavy rainfall into the recharge basin, it's a slightly different approach.
I, I guess my concern is, is that, and this is a, this is a workforce housing project, it's, I, I don't, I, I don't have to be a, an estimator to tell you that that's a, a, a more costly approach. Because you're, you're, you're creating multiple units and you're not having a large recharge area, you're, now you're putting in, uh.
Leaching pools. In some areas, yes.
I, I'd prefer not to, yeah, they would make the site larger, the development larger.
Which, it, it may not, it may not.
And then we're crunching in, we're trying to achieve all this open space as well, so we are trying to localize as much of the development on the site as possible.
Listen, I think we're, we're at the stage now where we can, it's a pre-application report?
Is this, no, is this site plan?
The site plan?
It'll be just, the action deadline is January.
Oh.
Competing interests in this application. The focus was to get.
You really do, yeah.
Get the open space to, to keep the integrity of some of these wooded areas, it's really over.
I think one of the things that mollified some of the people with the residential development to the east was the way the open space, in terms of not only the open space, but the CPF purchase were structured.
Yeah.
But, I support George's comments.
But I think, we're at the point where, where maybe we can't do this right, but I'm just putting under this, that, you know, I think we need to start looking at this for every application.
No, I, I, I'm not being critical of your thoughts, I just.
Policy focus, I think.
They come through the board.
I mean, that's sort of a.
And we started this fifteen years ago, when I was here before the Stanon, you know, we did this, Parish Art Museum and the Federal Place, we did that.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it just stopped, you know?
Right.
So we really need to start looking at it again as a.
Bring it back to the table, absolutely.
So.
It's all sand, and that area has. It's, it's an existing area, it's already low, so you just, they just accent, they're having to dig down deeper to make it, to meet the size of it, but it is, it is an existing depression.
Correct.
That you, they're digging deeper to make it to the size that you need.
Have we covered all the, uh, covered?
The only other thing I wanted to mention is, it's kind of important, it's affordable housing, so, um.
Oh, I can explain that.
Yeah, do we, um, we haven't talked about, like, levels yet or anything like that, I did not refer this to housing, um, but they will be involved at this point, going forward.
Well. The development's gonna be a hundred percent affordable units, the town board resolution, resolution didn't restrict the rental units to low, moderate, or middle. But the client, I spoke to the client, intends to have a mixed unit, mixed, mixed number of units for low, moderate, and middle income houses. All units will be rented to individuals at or below eighty percent of the area median income, the average rentals will be at or below sixty percent of the area medium, medium income. So it'll be a mix, although the, the resolution, the town board resolution didn't, didn't speak to it at all, it doesn't restrict you, but that is the intention, a mix of low, moderate, middle income households.
And there's a definition in the code, so we can, we can refer to that.
So, you should get feedback from housing, maybe.
Right, with the co- with the covenant that will.
Okay.
Yeah, but with that plan, of course.
Yeah, so.
Charlie, is anybody from the company itself here, or you, excuse me, is it anybody, anybody from NRT here? I'm curious, so, so how do you?
Uh, no, no.
How do, in, in any rental situation, for example, where you have units like this, how do you, um, control?
That's Rebecca's issue.
How do you control the occupation of a, of a, of a building? So if you have a two bedroom apartment, how many people do you really expect to be in there?
Right.
And what, what prevents, we're in the Hamptons, and everybody knows what goes on, somebody rents a, the unit and, and for, for one couple, and there's six people living there, because that's what they can afford. How do we, what, what's, I think, way back when, we'd ask for, for maybe some copy of what the typical lease and these things are gonna look like, to see if there's any controls and how you.
Well, you have uni- you hear, you, I don't want to jump in, but you have unified management, typically, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be aggressive management, competent management.
Yeah.
It's not like you're doing a smattering of seventy on individual, individually managed properties, there's gonna be a management company, they, they police pretty carefully, uh.
But is that, is that actually gonna happen?
Occupancy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would ask the applicant to answer the question.
Well. Airbnb, you, you worried about Airbnbs, but I.
Well, I'm not worried about Airbnbs at all, I'm, I'm actually worried, I'm actually worried about, I'm not worried, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, somebody renting a two bedroom unit for, for, you know, for, on the face value of two or three people or four people to, to, to exist, and then ten people is living.
We're gonna have.
It's gonna go through chapter two sixteen housing.
We're gonna have our town, our town safeguard.
It's under chapter two sixteen housing, it's affordability, so it's gonna go through our housing department in terms of lottery and qualifications and certifications and all that other stuff that they have to do yearly.
Yeah, the question is, all said and done, they'll follow the rules to get the apartment, and instead of the two people moving in, four or six people might move in.
Well, you'll generally hear from people who live there if they are.
They're violating.
And how do you control that, right? It's gonna be the management company that has to control it, and then it's about how long it takes to get that cleared up, that's the bigger problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You find it, and how long does it take to evict, or, that's, that's often the biggest problem, right?
Parking problems.
And parking problems.
That's one of the, we've, that's how the town.
Yeah.
In the past, has identified houses that.
Yeah, here again, it, it's to, to some things you mentioned, it's a post-review of property and say, okay, what's really happened here?
I'm gonna become, it's a general conversation, right, but you can call, you have life issues for people who live in the neighborhood, and then for the surrounding neighborhood as well, right, that you have, suddenly have this.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, although there, there will be, there will be guidelines that, that was going to go through the, you know, the lottery system, and you, you can't anticipate that people are gonna, are gonna, are gonna break the law.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't.
It's a clear violation.
There'll be, there'll, there might be one or a couple, and you have to just be aggressive at controlling it. No, I understand.
Yeah, the town has remedies.
Continue on. All right.
Okay.
You can blame me for when we don't get a break to have this.
Anything about the trailers?
Trailers.
Trailers?
That's, trailers are lot two, so, it's a lot two, no, it's okay, it's all good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lot two is the car wash and the.
Lot two. Yeah, I'm gonna go again through or a through.
This will say report?
All the same report, but on the page number four, it says lot number two.
Okay.
And this is an important one, because I'm gonna give you now this site plan to look at. So if you're familiar with the car wash and, um, laundry mat. Is, uh.
He's in the meat.
There's an open curb path, there's like, like, one little island there, so the county has responded back in the referral process, and they are going to, um, they're going to require some formalization of that curb path there, right?
Um, it might be helpful.
Yeah, you have a plan?
At this point, uh, I got this from Chris Robinson, the engineer, he, he's talking to the county, and this is, conceptually, what we're talking about. I, I'm not saying that this is cast in stone yet, but, um.
Yeah, because you have a, you have a wide open two hundred foot curb path in that, in that space, right?
So obviously, the, I understand when the board will take the opportunity to, to close things, deck things down, and, and this is, this is the latest iteration, it, it, you know, it is county roads, obviously, after the county. This is the latest, latest iteration, which, uh, Chris tells me that he's, it's, it's gonna look something like this, and he also wanted to suggest that to, those islands could be used to landscape as well.
Yeah.
That makes sense, okay.
Um, I'm, I'm not saying that the county, I don't, I, I don't wanna represent the county as signed up on this, but this is.
But that's kind of what they're thinking.
Where we are, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, there's a.
And so I just got this.
No, it's back, that's great, no, you do. Um, so obviously, county has the final jurisdiction, so we'll deal with that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, with regard to parking, uh, I don't think there's a parking issue here, we just wanna make sure, maybe put some handicap spaces for the laundry mat, not the car wash, because it's just, you know.
So it's right here, yeah.
It's a drive-through.
Yeah, um, landscaping, the landscape, if there's these aisles, we'll have landscaping in them, so that's C. Um, with regard to, um, natural creatures, there are, there's a nice buffer on this side and this side, and this is a residential use here. And then there's, there's a buffer on this side, I think twenty feet to one point up here, maybe.
Yeah, we do twenty feet on this side, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, it, uh, exists on the west side, the east side, just a cou- the one or two trailers are on there, and they just need to be moved over, and I think we got them.
Okay.
So we'll do that, um, obviously, a ton of engineer, lighting, any not conforming lighting would be brought into compliance, so, on the site, so we'll just take a peek at that. Uh, facade would not an issue.
One inch on.
And then, I'll put the information about the closed loop for the car wash.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, that's pretty much, and then cross access, um, it is commercial, but this is, um, the, um, manufactured home harvest for the west, and this is a residency, we're simply making the start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I don't have to trot out the home station?
No, you don't have to trot out the home station, so.
You're gonna have to spend a bill of hours.
So that's an easier, I think, the only thing, um, just some abandoned trailers, maybe just label which ones are abandoned, which ones are gonna keep, and then that, um, still have a building permits for those going forwards. So that one, we'll do this on the.
Kind of wrap up the issues, just to better, anything more to add?
Nope.
We're, we're off to the races, we can, we can go ahead and dra- adopt this, oh, no, this is.
No, on the ninth.
Yeah, nine, the, the port is already, we did a pre-submission, we stopped the pre-submission.
No, there's no pre-submission with change of zone applications.
Oh, okay, and subdivision does not pre-application?
And then the subdivision has a pre-application, so we'll adopt the pre-application, um.
On the ninth?
On the ninth, if everything's in order, we really need the town engineer, but everything's in order on the ninth, then we can adopt the site plan applications for both. I'll have resolutions way ahead of time on the, on the work on it, so, um, and of course, any questions, let me know.
Great, thank you.
Where's, where's?
See, we have to adopt the finding statement.
Before the, before we approve, before, before January ninth.
Yeah, the two thousand nine. Yeah.
Can we have that please, or?
Oh, yeah, of course.
So if we have questions, we should get them to you, and then they can be discussed on the ninth, because we will not move between them, okay? I just wanna make sure that.
I'm gonna keep this.
You, did you want to?
Like, Dave, if you want to have those questions, so.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Charlie.
Thank you so much for coming in, happy holidays, merry Christmas. There, did you have other applicants?
Oh, no, everybody else moved over.
Okay, Teresa, where? Hope it's not coffee.
It had a cup, it had a lid on it, so hopefully it's still.
Oh, that's good. Teresa, where are you taking us? Where are you taking us?
What number?
Riverside.
Riverside. And what number is that?
It is, uh, number one.
Oh, number, town board referral?
Number two.
Oh, I have Karovsky pre-app.
It's, it's town, town board referral.
Okay, so this is the Riverside, um, sewer district and sewage payment plan.
Huh, okay. I told it wouldn't.
An administrative, what, I'm sorry, administrative, uh, site plan application has been submitted, uh, the town code does allow for administrative site plan, uh, for town capital projects pursuant to a referral to the planning board. This, at the moment, is solely for the clearing of phase one, um, we are submitting the site plan application in order to clear phase one during the restrictive window for Northern Longyear Bat. As well as to try and accommodate the school district, um, so that we're not doing construction activities or clearing activities that would interrupt instructional learning hours. So that kind of limits us to two weeks at the end of December or the February winter break. Um, so again, what's being proposed at the moment is just solely clearing of the existing natural vegetation in this area of the proposed sewage treatment plant. Um, and then allows for future realignment of the road under the current play, uh, plan. Once the, uh, basis of design report is finalized, which we anticipate to happen in the late spring, then we will submit a full site plan for the actual construction of the sewage treatment plant. But this is just to ensure that we're compliant with Fish and Wildlife and EDC requirements for the Northern Longyear Bat.
What's that calendar window, it's December through?
It's December first through the end of February, February twenty eighth, twenty ninth of November, that's a week here. So, it's a very restrictive window, so we're just trying to make sure we have that ability to start as soon as we can start, um, and that we're not waiting until next December to clear the property and start construction. Because as you know, this project's been going on for ten years, almost fifteen years.
Are we in litigation with Riverhead on this?
Yes, there is litigation pending with Riverhead.
And that doesn't include us from moving forward?
We do not have a restraining order.
Okay.
Okay, what do you need for, is it a resolution?
It's a resolution, I passed it up to you, and it's just in support of the proposed site plan.
Oh.
And the clearing of the river.
Voted by George, seconded by Gloria, in all favor, aye, a public extension, six yes?
Yes.
We just voted, six yes, okay.
Teresa, do you have other, uh?
I do, I have a few other ones, if, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The, uh, next one is Karovsky subdivision.
Karo.
It is, um, an application that we looked at last February for pre, uh, pre-application into two lot subdivision. Uh, it's in East Falls on Cent- uh, Central Avenue, may pull that up for me. Their, uh, their attorney, Heather Bright, is, uh, trying to stay ahead of the game, she has until February to, uh, get all of her ducks in a row for the, uh, final subdivision application. But she feels that they're not gonna have sufficient time to do that, so they are requesting an extension ahead of the ti- uh, ahead of time, so that they have that time to, um, get their items in order for the final subdivision application. But this is a subdivision, it would be a flag lot here along the Sixteenth Drive, and then the, uh, the parcel line would be here. We did look at that last February and adopted a pre-app report, and they are requesting an extension.
Till when? Teresa, when, till when?
Huh?
Till when?
Um, I think until next February, or is it a six month, it might be a six month extension.
February nine, twen- twenty twenty six.
Yes, so one year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, seconded by George, all in favor, aye, oppose, extension, six yes?
Uh.
Want to keep going on yours?
Yeah, sure, they're, they're all really quick.
Okay, good, let's do it.
All right, so this next one is.
Lot eleven?
The lot eleven?
Charlton. Charlton Holsey?
Carlton Holsey.
Yeah, we looked at that, I think we had a, we had a public hearing on this, I believe.
No, we did not, it's a public hearing.
Oh, it wasn't needed, okay.
Right, so we had discussed it at the last meeting, um, and it was a a covenant amendment to allow for the second driveway and to abolish the.
Oh, yeah.
For our common driveway. Ba- uh based upon my review and I had forwarded the documents to Christine, a public hearing is not required, however, it does require a majority plus one vote to approve.
Okay.
What is the address of this?
Um.
It's on the Holsey path, you know, if you go down Five Point Road, down from the highway and you make a left, Holsey path is that little cul-de-sac down the left. Think that's all.
Here we go, so it's it's these two parcels here, these two flat lots here, they were required to share a driveway pursuant to the subdivision, but they were issued separate building permits more than twenty years ago for separate driveways, so they're just asking to maintain what what has been permitted under the building of different subdivisions.
Okay, there's motion by George, second by Kate, all in favor, aye, oppose, extensions, six yes, one absence.
The next one is the Watermill Museum. So, we're gonna report and uh. So, um, this is the Watermill Museum, we did a permit several years ago to construct a stack over here and some other minor improvements. The applicant is seeking to abandon the existing septic system, which is under this brick courtyard, install a new IA septic system, and uh reconstruct the brick courtyard. Um, I did a staff report, uh, which kind of goes through the site plan standards, which they're demonstrating compliance with. The conservation board uh application was referred to the conservation board and they are in support of the project. So I am recommending adoption of the report and uh authorization of the um septic system upgrade pursuant to the conditions outlined in the reservation, which is adding the buoyancy straps, which will be required by the health department anyway.
Yeah.
And then um submission of the signed, the plan for signature, and then either submission of the engineering fee or obtaining a fee waiver from the town board.
Where is, where is the new septic system going?
Right here.
Still, so still under the same, same location.
Same location.
Okay.
It's a good thing.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, second by George, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. Today, if you open your mouth, you're moved to.
A mid-party is a good thing.
Absolutely.
The last one is set one seventy three north.
Let's see.
Those plumber friends says on the letter on the front of his truck, flush beat the whole house.
Okay, so this is a two lot subdivision application, they have a building permit for construction of a home here, but they're looking to divide the parcel into two lots. The application is coming, um, recommending the application be incomplete and scheduled for a public hearing in February, which is listed in the resolution.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria. Second by eight, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions. We have six yes, one absent.
Anthony, can you do that fast?
Way to go. Anthony, you up? Okay, you wanna do, are you doing military?
Uh, no, uh. On old stables.
That's not, oh, old stables, I'm sorry, that's good.
Uh.
Item six, old stables.
Yeah, um, just real quick with old stables, that's beyond, um. Actually, as you can see, actually, the aerial files is really updated. Um. Uh, so we have a subdivision here that we did a final approval on, it's seven lots. Um, so it's six market rate, one affordable, and then an open space parcel on the back here. Back in January, almost a year ago, we set the performance on, uh, and the applicant never followed through with it. They started doing the roadwork, um, was having some issues getting the bond, so I suggested that they go ahead, get the inspections done, and then have Tom give us a new bond amount. Uh, so all we're doing here is rescinding the bond amount from January uh twenty twenty four and doing a new performance bond amount in the amount of two hundred fourteen thousand two hundred eighty nine dollars.
Do you, do you know what the other one was, just?
Five hundred something.
Okay, so they've got, we've got a lot of work done.
Got a lot of work.
Kate, do we have a motion?
No, just, uh, we're gonna rescind uh and and do a new performance bond.
One resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, six yes, one absence.
Are we actually gonna do Hampton Cove?
Hampton Cove, so that one.
Are we gonna extend it again?
We are, I did, um, we had this discussion, it wasn't initially going to be part of the approval, but after doing some more research and speaking to the health department, uh, we're going to, we gotta get uh septic system upgrade here. Um, and there's money for them to do it, so I sort of put this on them at the last minute, so uh we're just gonna do an extension uh up until January ninth uh twenty twenty five, so maybe there's gonna be some revised minds.
Very good.
That's actually a good thing.
Yep, motion, motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor, aye, opposed, extensions, six yes. Lots only? This is off the pre-submission conference.
Gloria. Gloria.
Hi, how are you?
You pass the basket, please?
If you don't mind getting your basket over there.
Yeah.
Take before you pass if you want.
Try not to.
Good stuff.
I know. No, it's coffee, I think.
Alright, uh, so everybody knows, uh, this is a cannabis retailer application ninety three, at East Mount Park Highway, it's a highway business zoning district. Uh, it sits immediately adjacent to what was at one point Capital One, uh, bank building, you know, that's a false structure.
This is Hampton Bays.
Hampton Bays, uh, number of years ago, three, four years ago, we actually did a site plan for this piece to redo the bank building and for an auto zone, um, we have a follow-up. Uh, so we have a pre-application right now, um, for a cannabis dispensary at this location. Um, in the back here, um, along the property line, this is uh our sixty zoning, the residential zoning. It's all highway business along the highway, and then we have um a Roman Catholic church. I believe this piece here. Um, so the church property sits here, this is.
Where's, where's the King College Shopping Center, is that just between?
Right here.
Okay, that's all right, so I, it's, it's the property that I'm thinking of, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so that's the description, and if you look on the first page, just for, by way of a little history, it talks about um the subject property and this property next door was part of the subdivision. Um, actually, from twenty fourteen, I created these two lots, it's an commercial subdivision, and as part of that subdivision, just so you know, there was a fifty foot buffer um sitting in the back, it's been, it came actually, someone's already established a fifty foot buffer. Um, and just for reference, thought that was important right now, but um there was a pretty significant grade difference between the two properties, uh, so we were really looking for cross access because of the big grade difference, so. Uh, this is a pre-submission, uh, the board looks, um, on page two, I have a public comments, we have a public hearing uh in October. Um, we received written comments and comments from the public, um, we have objections from Saint Rosalie's Roman Catholic Church, as I show you where they're located, um. Because we have a church, uh, which is subject to a two hundred foot separation difference, uh, then the church provides a pre-k daycare uh and children's ministry series. Um, and uh, so we consider that school on that subject to a five hundred foot setback, so. We got comments from the CAC and the public, um, comments regarding uses located close proximity to the residence, church, and daycare center. Cannabis use is not appropriate at this location or in the town in general, uh, concerns about traffic, uh, safety, hours of operation, lighting, uh, no on-site consumption, a need for proper landscaping and buffering, uh, and that cannabis uh dispensary is cowed to and created for the town's revitalization.
And a couple people spoke out in favor.
Correct.
If I remember correctly.
Yep.
I think we should make a note of that.
Yes, absolutely. So just as we go through this report, the the first two would really um be important ones, because these are the ones where we have the questions regarding meeting the standards, the rest of the reports.
Yeah.
All this standard stuff, so, um, you know, the first one has to do with the five hundred foot uh setback, um, and so, you know, I don't, it's, it's a pre-submission, we don't have radius, you know, exact stuff that we need, but you know, the question is, does it meet the five hundred foot setback uh for city, right, for a daycare school and that kind of thing? So, um, the way the code uh reads, um, it's measured taking the straight line from the nearest point of the school grounds to the center of the nearest entrance to the license. So, you know, we've been taking, you know, the position, the closest points of the school facility, as far as I'm concerned, it says it in the report, is the property line here. That's the closest point of the school facility, in my opinion, that's what the report says, so the question is, uh, do you meet the five hundred setback from the closest point of the property line in a straight line to the front door? And that was one of the questions that was raised by the public, that they may not meet that five hundred foot uh setback, so that's, that's an issue that, you know, had to be raised, and so that's a important standard.
Can you clarify to number, or sorry, one A, it says retail cannabis store is not on the same road and within, so it's and not or, okay.
Yep.
Sorry, had to, you have to.
No, no, and, yeah, yeah, um, but in this case, it is on the same road, and it kind of.
Yes.
And you're saying, your initial read is that it is less than five hundred feet?
You know, if I'm raising that question.
Yeah, the, the code is saying five, and you're questioning whether it meets it. Okay.
And then number two talks about the transitional yard setback, the the, the way the code reads is, um, retail dispensaries are subject to a a hundred foot uh transitional yard adjoining residential parcels, that's, you know. And we've had this question pop up on a few others, if you recall, and I've sent them to the chief building inspector because it was a question. Uh, here, this property line adjoins a residential district, that's, that's very clear, so it's subject to a hundred foot transition setback, uh, which they show here. And they're showing driveway and improvements and so forth within that transition yard. Uh, nothing is supposed to go within a transition yard, it's supposed to be completely clear. Um, there are provisions in the code that allow for driveways as such through transition, but through the front transition yard. Um, because you have a front transition yard, it's a street transition yard, presumably you'd have to have a driveway to make it group. Um, so these are the two, the two big issues, you know, I'm pointing out here, uh, the hundred foot transition setback, it's a special exception uh standard, it's unique uh to cannabis retailers, uh, that provides additional standard beyond the minimum required in the HV zoning district. And in drafting the town's regulations, it was determined this hundred foot setback was the minimum necessary uh to provide adequate separation between residential uses and cannabis retailers. Uh, so I'm just noting this project, this doesn't comply as proposed with that standard, um, and it should.
So those are two fairly, assuming, assuming that.
Those are, those are the big ones, um, that distinguish this.
Assuming the numbers are correct. They're two biggies, okay.
Um, so number three points that out that as proposed, uh, these have to be addressed, the planning board can approve the project as proposed, then, um, subject to these. I'm not saying that you can't address these, I'm just, these are the standards.
Right.
Right now. Uh, nevertheless.
Those are our zoning standards, not the state's.
The hundred foot transition is our standard.
Yes.
The five hundred foot separation difference uh is a state standard.
Thank you.
That we, that we.
Thank you.
To clarify, the state measures differently than you guys do. State measures door to door, and you measure lot line to door.
Okay.
There's a slight difference.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, nevertheless, I just had the comments, you know, for the applicant, um, A talks about these, the sections of the code, the special exception standard, general and specific. Uh, B, uh, regardless of any licenses that may have been issued already, um, you know, delivery services or anything, it's all approvals up in place. Uh, parking populations haven't been provided, but uh they come inside of the building, it was like twelve meter. Uh, and it would be an issue. Um, the plan right now maintains the two curb cuts one way in, one way out. Um, the redesigning this, it may be a better just to have one uh curb cut in and out, um, because right now it has, you know, sort of driveway going around the building.
Well, I guess it was a drive-through.
It was a drive-through bank at one point, so that's not the case anymore, consideration maybe to redesigning this a little bit, um, board thinks that might be, um, you know, worthy. Um, next one talks about the traffic study, so the planning board will require a traffic study as well as the um pedestrian movement and circulation plan. Um, and we always raise these other questions about time, parking, accident reports, uh, trip generation, damage to the shoes. Um, uh, uh, they went to the ARB, actually, so I noted in here that, uh, they went on a preliminary basis, we don't do referrals at the time of pre-submission, but the ARB did review this in November and approved the design of the building. Um, G talks about delivery services, so we wanted to know about storage of cars, um, delivery vehicles.
Is the, um, the drive-through is allowable, right?
No, drive-through is not allowed.
Okay, so that wouldn't be leveraged for the current building design.
And we're gonna get a copy of the delivery plan and everything like we've asked.
Yeah, yeah, I know about that. Um, I is about the lighting uh requirements, um, we'll refer to the new section again, I'll put that in there. Uh, J is standard regarding uh buffers, um, so site's pretty wooded, the landscaping plan is pretty good. Um, so we may wanna look at depending on what happens in the future, if we need to bolster the buffer from the residential, uh, and of course in the front, um, as part of the site plan. Other than that, most of the property has good vegetation on the perimeter. Um, a detailed safety management plan must be submitted, uh, with formal application. Uh, signage details uh must be provided with a formal application, uh, with no colloquial references or any predictions of products. Uh, this project, this one's a type two, actually, I'm gonna do secret. Um, and, and we'll make referrals, um, which may result in some more changes to the project. So all that the applicant, you know, discussed with the board, but I figured the board knows the two, the two initial components, that separation difference to a transition yard.
Am I cueing anything?
That's your cue.
Alright.
Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Doug Houston, uh, Levin Fenimore Road in New Rochelle, New York, and the architect for the applicants, Joe and Sean Lustberg. Um, you know, I, I first wanna kinda start with point number three that Anthony makes here, and empathize with us all being on, in this new frontier, new use. Um, certainly a lot of regulation, um, interpretation that needs to be determined here, and I think, um, number one on this um pre-submission report is kind of a big one, because this is gonna determine whether or not we go forward or not. And I think what would be helpful for us to prepare to move forward is clarification and and how we came to some of these conclusions. Um, and and then reviewing the sections of the code to see if we are on the same page about what that means, uh, and how we would interpret that here. Um, and so I, I'd like to kinda go through that with you guys, kind of systematically. Um, I think maybe first it's worth noting a little bit of the history here. Um, this is now the fifth touch point of checks and balances about this property being applicable. Um, back in two, two thousand twenty-three, the owners had consulted with the town supervisor to try to find a suitable location. Um, this was a location that was identified very early on as potentially a suitable location. Um, and then in December of twenty-three, the owner petitioned the town to consider the proximity. Uh, and at that moment in time, there were no objections from the town, and that was referred to the office of cannabis management. The office of cannabis management went through their own proximity analysis and also found no objection to this location. In fact, they issued a proximity protection, which basically means that they've established their location for the thousand foot rule of other cannabis uh dispensaries in the area, and they also hired lobbyists to verify any conflicts of proximity. A year later, we're here in front of the planning board, and we're, we're being raised questions if, if this site is suitable, and, you know, understandably, they spent a lot of um time and money uh to get to this point, and so we're hoping that today, um, we can get a better understanding of why that's coming up now, and why the town's determination was different than their initial assessment and the OCM's assessment.
If I could just interrupt you for a second, I don't think you're gonna get any definitive answers on that today.
I presume.
It's the pre-app report, so it's raising it as an issue, obviously, we'll have to sit down at some point and try and figure that out. If you could, in the meantime, provide this proximity determination that you got from the state, whatever you have.
Sure.
If you can give it to Anthony, it would be helpful in us looking at everything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But what I heard was that it was the, the, the state. But what I heard was that it was the, the, the state is a thousand foot from other cannabis dispensary.
Right, ours is five hundred feet.
Not anything to do with.
No, that's, yours is a thousand.
Yeah.
As well.
I would prefer.
This is one of like four different proximity requirements.
For school.
So, but they go through the distance requirements to make sure that you comply with the churches, schools, and community centers.
The, the example I heard, okay, the, the only one I heard articulated was a thousand foot.
So far, so far. I'll go through each of them, cause I think it's relevant.
So, okay.
Um, so, uh, Andy, I pres- presume you prepared a report, so I, I think I have some, just on the same page questions. Um, can you confirm what uses Saint Rosalie is included in their written comments? Um, this was the, the first objection, third objection. You, you note here daycare services? Is that the only use that they provided in that report? I didn't have a copy of the report.
Uh, I'm presuming I'll have to double check that, if that's what they said. It went on to the point.
Okay.
That other members of the public mentioned pre-K, uh, ministry series, which is, that's typical of half a church, Sunday school, that kind of stuff. I don't think so.
Yep. Typical uses in a church, yeah. Okay, can you, um, confirm where on the property each of the uses that you've identified is located? Uh, I have a map here if you wanted that kind of point, so where is?
No, I, no, that's, I.
You don't know where that is?
I, I, I'm raising a question here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't say you don't meet the standard, but I said you may not meet the standard, so you get the opportunity to address these comments, but I. I didn't sit there, I'm not going to sit and measure from each point, I'm just raising the question.
No, I'm not measuring, I just, there's, there's three uses identified on the property, and I think the location of those uses is important to establish.
I would, I would agree with you.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, based on a pre-submission conference, based on conceptual site plan, based on the reading of the code.
Yeah.
I'm simply taking the measurement from the property line, uh, to the front door.
Sure.
If I'm not correct in that, or if there's another thing where the state says I'm wrong about that.
I don't think you need to defend yourself, I'm just trying to.
You know, I, I, we'll address it, but I, you know, I don't have any.
Yeah, yeah. So, our understanding, just so we're on the same page of the board, is that there's a, a building in the rear of the property. So this is the, the building right off of Montauk. This building here is the house of worship. Uh, then there's a building in the back here, which we believe is what is used as the pre-K. And that was just determined through looking at their, their website and, and the photos on their website of where the children, uh, were. So I just wanna note that on this parcel, there is a school use and a community, uh, uh, a house of worship use. Am I correct from your G I S data that the owner of the property is Saint Rosalie's Roman Catholic Church?
I think it's a archdiocese of Rockville, Central.
Uh, yeah, they have it as Saint Rosalie's Roman Catholic Church.
The owner of the parcel.
That's how they have it.
Uh, and the land use that I found online was religious with a tax code of six twenty. Not a tax code of six twelve, which is the New York State school designation?
Uh, six twenty, that's what we have for.
Six twelve is what the school is. Uh, okay, so, um, you know, based on the public record. It seems to me from what we found is that the classification of the grounds that we're looking at is being classified as a church, religious property. Not a school property. Um, there are two different uses on here, but it is, uh, it, it's our contention that this is not school grounds. Um, and so I wanna explore whether or not this is school grounds, cause I think this is the crux of the dimension, of the measurement of the dimension.
I think I'm confused because on here, one C, the church is actually the more restrictive, correct?
No, no.
No.
Or is it one hundred or five hundred?
Schools, schools.
Five hundred, it's.
And the church is the two hundred.
I see, okay.
So I think, you know, all the agencies and, uh, lobbyists and people that we had kind of looked into this property. And what everybody saw was the church, you know, not a school in that location. So when they kinda gave us the go-ahead, like this is a viable property for this, you know, they were thinking it's a church. I think this just came out of nowhere that they offer daycare services and I think it's trying to be, you know, construed maybe like it's a school. And that we should abide by the five hundred feet, but we think it should be, you know, it's a two hundred.
Whether they're both five hundred feet, just whether you're measuring the property line or the entrance of the building.
Is the church five hundred feet or two hundred?
No, it's two hundred.
It's two hundred for church.
Community facility is five hundred, entrance to entrance.
About, yeah.
Right.
Which a daycare would be a community facility.
But then the state also, you know, defines a school as a facility that's only operating school services on that property. This facility offers multiple services, so that would be considered a community facility.
Did, did you measure from the, from the, um, from the daycare building? Is it possible that's five hundred feet if you go from the daycare, the school building to your property?
We should be.
From the entrance of the school building.
Of the school, right.
To the entrance of our facility is greater than five hundred feet.
Okay, so either way.
The, well, the problem would be if you classified this parcel owned by the church as school grounds. We would then be less than five hundred square feet to the property line.
Which was what Anthony's initial assessment was.
Yes, yes, yes. Which is, I think, what we're challenging here, to think about it in a different way. And what I wanted to do is I wanted to read both your definition of school grounds, cause it's defined, as well as the New York State. Uh, education definition, which your code references. So this says, and I wanna be really careful with grammar and the words. Um, school grounds shall be defined as any building, structure, and surrounding outdoor grounds. Including entrances and exits, contained within a public or private preschool, nursery school. Elementary or secondary school apostrophe S, possessive, legally defined property boundaries pursuant to the New York State education law. The addition, the New York State education law just basically adds, uh, as registered by the county clerk's office. So the county clerk's office defines the ownership of the boundary of the parcel to be the church, not any school. And so I'm interpreting that as this would not be considered school grounds. Because per the definition of school grounds, within the ownership of that parcel would be what determines if it's school grounds or not. Now, your code, um, doesn't say that it has to be exclusively used as school grounds. But in, um, twenty twenty-three, the office of cannabis management, the New York State Office of Cannabis Management, issued guidance. That clarified some of these, you know, how to find the properties. And in their guidance, they added to that definition. A dispensary cannot be on the same road and within five hundred feet of a building and its grounds occupied exclusively as school grounds. As defined by section four oh nine two of the New York State education law. So I think the state O C M department was trying to clarify some obscurity in the code. And this is not dissimilar to how the liquor authority also clarified their initial regulations from nineteen thirty-three in two thousand seven. They started to use terminology about exclusive use as well to eliminate ambiguity and to minimize legal challenges. And so I think we can look, I, we're in a new frontier for cannabis, but I think we can look back at the liquor authority history. And take cues from them about how they determine the use and, and of a, the use of, what uses are on the property and if it's a school ground. Or a house of worship. Um, excuse me, so, um. When it comes to, um, the way that the, the liquor authority determines. Exclusive use when both uses exist on the site, which is really what we have right now. They first look to predominant use. Is there, is there something that is predominantly used on that, or predom- predominant on the site? And could we consider it exclusive? And if they can't, then it seems that they would look at the public records about what that use of that land is. And in our case, like I stated before, I believe this is a religious use of the land. Uh, and so I think, um, we may wanna look at whether this is truly a school grounds. Or if we need to look at this as two individual buildings with individual uses. And the New York State guidance actually has language as well to clarify that. So it says. I'm not even gonna find it here. Um, the measurement. Shall be taken in a straight line from the center of the nearest entrance of the nearest building occupied as a school. Comma, on the school grounds, to the center of the nearest entrance to the premises of the licensed, uh, licensed cannabis dispensary. So I think what they're saying is, if this was school grounds, the state wants to measure from the door to the door. Your code, when it's determined to be school grounds, asks to measure from the property line. So I would call your code more restrictive than, than the state code. But the spirit of the state code is a clarification that it's a, a school building on a school ground. And then we're definitely in the domain of school grounds, and, and then if your code superseded, we would go into the property line. But in this case, there is a house of worship on land owned by the school, uh, by the, by the church. And so what I think the right interpretation here is to treat each building individually. This is a school on church grounds. Presumably their school was leasing that space from the church. The predominant use is the church. And I would say we would measure from the door of the school to the door of our building, which is five hundred feet, which we would comply with. And to the door of the house of worship, to our door, which is two hundred feet, which we would also comply with. I don't think school grounds applies here because of the clarification that New York State has given to us.
So typically, when we need an interpretation of zoning code, we refer to.
Well, I think in this case, because it's an entire, we're talking about really the, the, the state versus the town's regs and guidance and whatnot. And just so you know, we have an attorney in the office who actually is the one that really does all the cannabis stuff and, and we do speak to O C M quite, she does quite frequently. Um, we just had a, a recent issue where we spoke to them on, uh, a difference in understanding how local municipalities issue C O's. As different to what they think of when they see a C O.
Sure.
So it's kind of like a learning curve on both sides, but, um, I would, we would, after this, you know, at, once it's adopted. It raises that it's an issue that needs to be discussed. We will then have meetings and talk about it, and we will involve O C M in those meetings and we'll get a determination one way or the other.
Wouldn't we want to get an interpretation from the chief building inspector? In other words, their contention is that.
Not, I wouldn't, right now, I mean, he, they, that's their right, they certainly can do that, but what I'm saying is.
Their position is that this is not a school.
School grounds.
I, yeah, I understand that. But it's not so much, it's not a school grounds, he's, he's interpreting it in the context of the O C M regulations.
And I think this is a new frontier for everybody, right?
Yeah.
But I don't think, if we determine that it's, uh, you know, a church and not a school, then I think it doesn't really matter what the state says or the local law. We would even comply either way.
So I'm assuming.
So if you wanna get an interpretation from the building inspector, you can, that's your right to do.
No, I think, I think it, we know the avenue is through the legal department here. Um, is it possible for me to be in those meetings with you and O C M?
Yeah.
To help.
Yeah, yeah.
Facilitate our understanding of the proposal.
Yep.
I think that would be useful.
You always, also have that option to go to the building inspector. Sometimes that's cleaner av- avenue.
You can do that, that's absolutely your right to do.
And, and are you suggesting I ask for his interpretation or her interpretation of school grounds?
Yeah, to, to look at, this, pull the C O's, Saint Rosalie, and say, is this a church or is this a?
Oh, yeah, definitely, we, yeah, we didn't, we just got this last night and Anthony told me I couldn't bring all legal documents. I brought plenty of documents for Anthony, um, but, and I think there's, um, Suffolk County Record search we wanna take a look at.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, the permitting, how did they file that building, what uses did they file those buildings under?
Cause if he says it's a church, case closed.
I also like to note that there is a liquor store right across the street from that church, right, so for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, liquor was legal long before, you know, cats.
But it.
But they have a two hundred foot.
It's, it's that.
Yeah.
Rule that is similar, not exactly.
They do. Versus, yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
But Dennis, I, I think also, yeah, again, because this is new and emerging legislation and interpretation. Even the bill inspector determination, this is a, this is a not school grounds under definitions. The whole, you know, the intent of the law probably was to provide separation between small children going to school, or children in school. And a cannabis retailer, so what are the implications associated, I'm not getting into that. So I, I think in this case, it would be better to, they could certainly go that route, but I think there's an interpretation of O C M.
You're gonna have to do it one way or the other.
And I, I would assume from the discussion that when, when you, when you refer this to the O C M, for their interpretation of separation distances. There was no mention of the fact, you know, that, that, that there was a, a, a classroom. Uh, any kind of schooling going on at the church, which you probably didn't know about, right? So that was, probably wasn't taken to the comment. This may, this, this may just well be a, a new way of, of, a separate interpretation you need to make. To clarify that section of it too, because there could be many, you know, it could be that a church has an outreach, a half mile down the road where they send kids to get, you know, is that a school or not, right?
But, you know, just, and, and, you know, to raise the issue and we should get all these interpretations and we should talk to the office of cannabis management and talk to the chief building inspector.
Yes.
I say because there is that five hundred foot and the question about whether it's a school or church, because there is the, we have general special exception standard. And not specific, and the general just says, uh, that the planning board shall find that the characteristics of the produce are not such that the produce location would be unsuitedly near. A church, school, theater, recreation, or other places of public assembly, and that's just a general standard with no specific setback requirement, and that's another standard that you have to.
Yeah.
Well, firstly, but we have guidance, we have statutory guidance, if that stands.
That's what I'm saying, interpretation.
Specific.
But the interpretation.
And that, that has the opportunity to provide that.
The interpretation from the building inspector is fine, but it's still gonna have to come down to what we, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's gonna be contributory, but, I, I totally understand that.
And it, it may end up being site-specific determinations from O C M based on conditions, you know, for.
So you talk about separation, I mean, there's certainly the dimension as the bird flies, and then there's, there's the physical eye level.
Probably the land.
Characteristics of that area, and I just kinda wanna note that the area just, kind of in between our facility and the church is heavily wooded. Uh, it's really hard to see that building from Montauk Highway in the first place.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And then between the direct as the crow flies between us, heavily wooded, several residences, commercial properties. Uh, and in fact, there's, there's two entrances to that, that daycare facility. I'm not stipulating which one they're using at the moment. I didn't see any particular signage on the property, what they're using, but I think from a. Keep visibility away from schools, or there is a, there is a requirement for visibility, um, direct visibility from a school in your code. We are visually separate, we are physically separate. Um, it's just we are getting close as the crow flies, and I think that school grounds determination is gonna determine whether it's okay or not, okay.
Yeah, but I think it's also, it's also the perception, general public perception of use at this moment, right? Compared to, compared to that, right? So, you know, we're, it's, it's really is a, a front, you're at the front, in a frontier, right?
We're both followers, so that is a preschool.
Yeah, and I, I think discussing children in general, I think maybe an important thing to do, because, um.
Are, are we gonna get into like philosophical discussion?
Yeah, that's not, cause that's thicker than.
Yeah, but it's.
You gotta get into other stuff.
It's twenty minutes, twenty to five, we've got twenty-five minutes to further.
Okay, oh, oh. You got it. I look forward to our, our discussion when we get started.
What about the hundred foot transition setback?
Okay, yeah, so, you win, Anthony, thank you. Um, so, I, I.
You're gonna give us the hundred foot transition setback? You're gonna have to, if you go to the zoning board and get released, you're gonna find, you're gonna get.
You have to.
So I, I think what we're going to do is there's a large planting net around the backside of the building that we're just gonna reduce down. So that the access driveway that runs behind the building stays out of the transition zone. So I think that move will solve the encroachment into the transition zone. Um, Andy, I think one clarification I wanted to make from something you said. The, um, the transition zone doesn't prohibit anything in it. You want screening.
The transition, transition yard, aside from the front, you know, which allows for certain things, or supposed to, there are specifications, it can be educated.
Correct.
On there, but, but, uh, yes, they're not.
Not, well, I think you said in your report, a clear with nothing in it.
They're not, they're, they're not. They're, they're not.
Retaining walls could be in there because grade changes.
Yes, I wouldn't necessarily give you any grief about that, cause the retaining walls, about a cannabis facility next to someone's house, so.
Okay. And we're actually, the, the, the nice part about this in the back of the property is that the, the grade outside of our property is much lower. And so we do have a large retaining wall here, so again, visually, there is a separation, and we have a fence on top of that. So I think, uh, Anthony, you'll see the proposal, we've actually asked, we're outside of the transition zone, and I think we can take two off of the table.
Perfect.
Um, there's a few things in your other notes that I would love to just, uh, ask questions on. Uh, let's see here, so parking calculations was included, Anthony, and we made.
Oh, we did, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's fine, it's twelve, we're gonna provide, I think we're providing seventeen. Um, the two curb cuts, um, so I was curious if that was a recommendation based on the fact that the rear transition zone was in jeopardy? Um, I mean, look, the reality is, is that this is, from all intents and purposes, a interior retail improvement. This building. This building that we are trying to improve is in bad shape and there are certainly some zoning requirements that we have to do things. But changing the existing access to the site is not a requirement in zoning. And in order to, and I don't know if you've seen the renderings of the spit, the guys are really interested in investing in the building itself. But money is not unlimited and so if we can avoid DOT curb cuts, all all of that extra process. We would really like to keep the existing curb cuts as they are, they were presumably approved before.
You know, the one way in, one way out is not the worst thing. Well, I was, I just made a suggestion that the consideration, so I I'm not the narrative.
It's not, that's not too bad.
Just one thing, so to be aware, I've done two referrals in the past on change of uh change of uh use applications, that no site plan changes. And the DOT and the DPW made them do major work, if that's right, so.
Yeah.
I just want you to know that if I make a referral, they say we want the sidewalk three done, I I you know.
We know they could throw the hammer at us.
I decided to fire him.
Yes, we know that. Okay, um, and then.
So I'm not married to that one curb cuts.
Yeah. Um, we did provide a dumpster location, maybe it wasn't clear in the description, I just want to make sure that that was adequate and no additional work was needed on that.
I just made sure that we get the detail of the site and whatever the landscape, yeah.
Somebody's gonna be doing a plate, yeah, okay. Um, we did provide a landscaping plan, uh, it wasn't as sexy as my.
Yeah, no, no, just um, uh, these are all for formal submissions, that's all it is.
But what we provided is adequate, I don't I don't have to make it elevate the graphics of it anymore than what it is.
No, 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 okay. Just with the formal submission, with you know, that that height of plantings, the caliber.
Okay.
Usually pre-submission.
Okay, just to clarify, you said we could take two off the table, doesn't mean we take two off out of the report.
They've addressed number two, that's what I mean.
Said that you can address number two, we're leaving it in the report.
They've addressed, but it's it's staying in the report, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, it's just based on the plan.
This is just an informational report.
And it's Suffolk County DPW would be the authority, not the DOT for the curb cut. That's a county rule.
I think my thing with the thousand, uh, the hundred foot buffer was, you know, speaking with kind of fire, um, marshal, you know. He kind of said that, so this is obviously an existing parking lot that's there, we also had the town engineer come out and walk the property with us. Because, you know, it needed some repair, um, there was some areas where it sunk in a little bit, so we wanted his kind of feedback if we needed to replace the whole thing. You know, we're leasing this uh property, you know, we don't own the property, so, you know, we've raised over a million dollars to invest in the property, so we're gonna make it gorgeous. But we were trying to kind of stay away from having to redo the parking lot, cause that's a huge expense. And after the town engineer came and walked the property with us, he kind of agreed that you don't need to redo the parking lot. You know, we had contractors come and look and said, oh, this is in bad shape, like, you know, the town's gonna make you redo it. So we kind of had the town engineer come and tell us that we didn't need to redo it. But now it's this, you know, kind of driveway that goes behind the building, which we were kind of hoping that could just be maybe a fire lane. You know, we weren't gonna put any spots or occupy it with anything, but just kind of leave it the way it currently is, you know, so that the fire marshal and their trucks get through. So that was just my only thing, like, I just don't know if anything else is gonna come up, if we're kind of decreasing that space and the fire trucks can't get to the rear of the building.
And in my understanding of the transition zone is that it's mostly restricting use in that area. You don't want any uses in that area on the piece of, a piece of property. So if all of our uses, which includes parking, and I guess in your interpretation, the driveway to that parking is off the transition zone.
What I'm trying to avoid here um is relaxing special exception standards for a new use in the town for which we have not one business opened up yet. I get the reservation has them all, but we have not one, not one approved plan. And if 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 this then goes to the zoning board of appeals to get a reduction, because I don't think this planning board can reduce, they have the zoning department. You have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a reduction in the hundred foot setback.
Our intent is.
Reduction is your application today, it will take you four months to get a hearing.
I, our intent is to be as of rights.
Realize.
Yeah.
So that's what this revised proposal is, as of right, out of the transition zone.
Supply.
Yeah.
Transition zone, you allow tra- lanes of travel, you allow utility, uh.
You know, if you said to me, if if a fire marshal says, you know, uh, you need a fire way in there, I'm I'm not gonna stop you from looking at fire. The planning board's not gonna stop you.
I I don't have a real problem with the one in, one out, but I mean.
Okay, that's fair, that's fair.
Yeah, it's, state might have other plans.
The thing is, at this point, it's pre-submission, right? So all the considerations are out on the table, situations change from this very moment to your time of submission.
Yeah.
And we have to consider the application with what's in front of us at the time, so might worth some more money, because it takes time, it takes money. You know, those considerations are all in place and to Anthony's point, you know, we don't have any facilities that have been granted yet. This is gonna be highly visible, highly, you know, potentially contested and some supported, um, and you know, it's, it's an uphill effort. Um, and that's, you know, and you know, so, um.
Great, great.
I don't see anything in this report that we can't solve.
Be prepared.
Yeah.
Again, if if new things come into the report, we'll have to.
Yeah, well, it's a guidance document, based on your, your submission.
That's, that's, that's what it is.
Right.
But my goal on the next submission is to satisfy everything you need here and it'll be done.
Right. Yeah.
I know that's your goal too, I mean, you love to approve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're ready for the application.
So I don't think there's gonna be much resistance.
And by the way, the elevations and the rendering look really nice, I would say the landscape looks really good, so I think.
So we're good to go to adopt this report, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, and all in favor, I oppose, six, six yes?
Thank you, guys.
Sorry for the wait, folks, but happy to get the application.
Thank you for all. Okay.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
Uh, Anthony, are you staying or you?
I was gonna finish my last few things, Howard, do you want to?
Howard, I have twelve as well. Keep going, Anthony, what else can you say?
Uh, quick accolade is also, we're gonna do an extension of the key for action deadline for January.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I think we should make an extension till two thousand ninety-nine.
So is that your motion, Gloria?
Yes.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, he's smiling, all in favor, I oppose, six yes?
King Lane of State.
He's smiling.
And then I have, you know, King Lane of State, it's a North Sea Freeland subdivision, uh, but they don't have a cluster pan between the plans that we would want here, so I think we're just, I'm recommending the deviant.
Deviant complete, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Tom, all in favor, I oppose, abstention, six yes?
And then, uh, just so you know, the only walk-on was the Farrell Butter Lane, uh, which Gloria, sorry to ask.
Okay, acknowledge that for the record, and that's a walk-on.
Yes.
Yes.
Claire, are you up or?
I'm a chief applicant, so if you don't mind jumping around.
Okay. Do you have milk, is that milk tree heights? Is that milk tree heights, Claire?
Um, sorry, number eleven, which is seven fifteen, seven forty-nine.
Okay. How are you, Sean?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, happy holidays.
Yes, and the same to you.
We're seven fifteen, ten thirty.
So we're on item eleven, seven fifteen.
I agree, I have different numbers.
Oh, seven fifteen, yes, seven fifteen.
Should you take something away?
Are we missing a report? Do we have enough reports?
Is there enough?
David have a, a support?
Yeah, I think it's.
I think you have enough.
I'm good, thank you.
I just think Dave, I don't think Dave has one.
Dave, you have one?
I, I ready.
Okay. You gonna share, you guys have a map?
A little bit.
Yes.
Gloria and I are gonna share, are you gonna share with David? Oh, you have a map?
I have.
Yeah, I, well, this is a report that I only have one.
Oh, okay.
But you have, you all have one though, right?
Yes.
So this is an existing site, um, it's on Conry Road thirty-nine, uh, over the years, it's been a car dealership and a car repair shop. It is, this is South Hampton Golf Course, and then this is the big, um, like Morton Building, which has the, um, Peter Shake on the outside, I think it's RLW.
RLW, yeah.
Um, and this one, and then this is, of course, is Tuckahoe Lane. So, um, the site plan is for the, um, addition in the building on the second floor of the office space. Um, so that's the legalization of second story office, it's about twelve hundred square feet. Um, and this is actually, so o.
And it's, it's been built, or it's been?
It's been built, yeah.
Okay.
So over the years. So over the years, it's been like, there was a buffer up until like a couple of years ago, and now it's been blown out. Um, and then in about two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the golf course put their housing here, so I'm gonna show you the aerial again. So their housing is right here, I think maybe reestablishing a buffer in the back, which is the fifty foot buffer, uh, would be appropriate here on this case, so that's one issue. Other than a public hearing on October twenty-fourth, and there was no public comments during the divided three, year hearing, or the divided three day conference. It'll be a site plan application, um, and then I just do a little re-history here about what the COs are issued. We have the two uses on the property and the continuing uses. Um, so for the use, it's the existing CEO for auto repair shop and auto dealership. This is the middle of page two, by the proposals to legalize the twelve hundred thirty-two second story office space accessory to the existing uses on the property. It is an endless gap share from Almond Deesea prior to the application completes, both master plan indicates highway business. Um, so there's not gonna really formalize parking plan here, but I think it would be appropriate to do that here and then, um, indicate the handicap spaces. You know, they equip the fire ban accessible aisle. Um, so outdoor display and storage, this is where my report, uh, I did have language in the report about this. They should, any car storage or any for the either usage should be indicated and there will be parking related to that.
Claire, can you just reaffirm what you, what the usage is now, you mumbled a whole lot of stuff and I was trying to find it.
Car repair, car sales, two uses issued by the zoning board.
Car repair, car sale.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I kind of summarized it, but that's what the history cut goes through on the property. So with car repair, you're always gonna have storage of vehicles and with car sales, you are gonna have storage of vehicles, even here.
So they're selling used cars?
You're selling used cars, so if you go by, there, these are cars for down this aerial, you can see these cars for sale.
Okay.
And that's fine, but that's sub outdoor display and you're gonna have to accommodate that with some parking.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll, I'll put that language in there.
And what is it?
And then I, number seven is that the buffer in the rear has been blown out, so either reestablish the fifty foot buffer or, you know, do some substantial plantings in the back. Um, obviously you can see from the west, they aviated the need of the buffer because there's just, there's nothing here in this case. And this is the golf course, but there is the housing here again, I think there should be some buffering to that. Would you, would you think more like, they're proposing some evergreens on this side? Would you say it'd be fifty feet or would it be the, you know, evergreens on the side and maybe twenty feet in the back, I'm not sure.
Twenty feet if they could plant close together.
Okay.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet in the rear, and then plantings on the east side, okay.
Yeah. The golf club has plantings on their side.
They do.
They do, yes, they do too, so I just think, I think twenty feet, just give it a nice buffer together, maybe so much fifty feet, is that.
It it's also good for carbon sequestration.
Yes.
Even though I can, I have a hard time saying that word.
You did fine.
So they have two open curb cuts, um, in the front, um, they do need have overhead doors in the front, so you do fully need some access. But, um, I don't think we're closing any of the curb cuts here, but maybe more additional low plantings on maybe either side, which would be.
Is that an island in between?
There is, but it's, it's not even, it's just the curb.
No.
No.
Now it was just kind of more of a.
It's just the curb.
Oh, okay.
Of where sand has collected.
And we need to, you need to establish access to the weird, the the doors.
The the doors. But so just to give you a little bit of history, uh, the, the owner, uh, of the property doesn't live here and he had a tenant, a previous tenant. And the tenant started doing some work inside the building. It was on, the owners, uh, was told that he was being, doing this with permits. He was doing work without permits, obviously. So the, the, the tenant is no longer there, the owner's kind of taking control back over. And that's what he said, he saw that he had the office, he thought, do I legalize the office? He's now been while here trying to figure out what the cost is because it was not a hundred percent finished, he partially like started. He has decided that he doesn't want that office up there, uh, it's more trouble than it's worth and he just wants to just have it as a storage. So he's, wants to abandon the whole idea of having office space on that second floor altogether.
So he will be adding another use from our perspective.
He will not be adding another use, so so correct, so he wants to now leave it as just the, the two uses that are currently in place, which is the dealership, you know, the used car dealership. And and then they have the car service, uh, which takes place, which most of that happens on the.
Did you say car service or car sales?
Car, well, it's car sales and it's car repair, it's both happening on on the property.
Okay. Cause certain, car service means taxi to me.
Oh, sorry, I, so yeah, so it's car repair, uh, is what's happening. And and then there's also the 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 car dealership of car sales, yeah, and they're used cars, not not new cars. The, the rear property has been, clear as you know, uh, that back area is is gravel, it was not paved at all, so it's just, it is pervious back there.
Well, that's good.
The other thing too, and I just wanted to bring up, cause um, I did read the report, the cross access that was established to the property to the west was, um, towards the back of the property, you're gonna almost see, you see what the, yes, that that's where the cross access was established and and agreed upon uh, for for the, uh, for that property there. Uh, so I, I mean, I don't see any problem, although that would be in that transition yard. I did take a measurement off of, I pulled up the, the site plan that they had, it's about twenty-eight feet off of, off the rear.
Mm-hmm, so twenty, twenty works, you think?
Uh, so it's. Yeah, so twenty works.
Okay, perfect.
You know, that that would work for for us to kind of create that space there. And then when I looked over, I didn't know if you wanted to have cross access, I don't, you know, to to the golf course. The only spot that I could see that that's potential is closer to the, well, then they they would have to, if they did, they would have to give up that spot. Or I don't know if cross access was ever determined when, when the golf course came to planning.
I don't think so, but we would probably just do a general, make sure cross access is.
General.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, how far is that from McGee Street site? I think it might be four or five sites.
It is.
It is, right?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, cause that, that, that would be the goal.
And there's a golf hole in between.
No, no, you'd go on the other way.
Oh, yeah, no, you, you could, you would have to have to cross the golf course.
No, that's Tuckahoe.
That's Tuckahoe, yeah.
McGee, McGee Street.
McGee Street.
McGee Street, this is.
No, this is Tuckahoe.
You had to go your, you know.
Tuckahoe.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's past McGee Street.
So it's right at Tuckahoe, it is a good, it is a good connection going west, kind of like.
It's past McGee Street.
Yeah, it is kind of, yeah, okay, I, I.
Tuckahoe Lane, yeah.
They have like bearing toll, so.
We'll do, we'll do a cross access easement to the east, to the west, and then future to the east, but I don't know, it's, you know, it's kind of stopped by golf courses.
Yeah. Stop right there.
Right, the only spot that I saw was towards where that residence is, there seems to be.
Back here?
Right, it puts you, again, right there, that's exactly where.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, what what I saw was, I don't.
That's golf course housing.
That's golf course.
But if you get passed through the RLW four site, then you can head north on Tuckahoe and and avoid the whole mayhem on the North Highway.
There's no advantage on the east going east.
I don't think so, it's advantage for the golf course to go over this site, to go over the left, yeah.
To go, go back.
Yeah. Get across the RLW four site.
Right.
Out to Tuckahoe, it's louder than.
So in your report, we're removing the second story office space?
Yeah, I'm gonna say the applicant on the record has indicated to change it to storage, which just still generates parking and still should be like, this should be a cleanup, you know, just.
There's just gonna be storage accessory to the u, to the two existing uses.
Correct, more or less what it was before.
And there's a couple of repair bays in the front? A couple of repair bays or the bays in the front?
Yes, so those, so those repair bays in the front are all associated with the, um, the the auto sales.
Auto repair, oh, I see. Okay, so where's the repair?
Yeah, they, 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 they keep them in and they do keep some cars in there for for parking. It's more or less like a display, you know, they they pull the cars in for display.
Yeah. So the repair is in it.
In the repair mostly takes place along, yes, the the eastern side of the building.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
That's where the charge.
But there is no tenant there now.
There is.
Oh, there is?
Yeah, there's a tenant there.
Oh, it's.
And it, well, it was the tenant, uh, of the, of the auto sales, uh, was the one that, uh, so there's the, a new person who's taken over the, the auto sales uh, since all this happened about a year ago.
Uh, both entrances in and out, both of them are in and out.
There's no signs or.
There's no sign.
And they're pretty wide.
Yeah.
But but for the most part, I I just know when I tried to access the property myself, uh, it was, uh, you know, the one on the east is the one you're pulling in.
Going in, yeah.
And the one on the west is you're pulling, you're pulling out, so.
Okay.
If I remember from my days working here full time, when the RLW got their site plan approval from the planning board, I think they prohibited right turns out. They could only make lefts down to thirty nine, weren't allowed to make rights to go up Tuckahoe Lane.
True, there's a sign.
So if we do.
Is there a sign?
Yeah.
Is that a, which was a tree, a tree, uh?
It was, um.
Yeah.
Raised.
Rick, uh something tree on the surface.
Right.
Uh, yeah.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I think so, anyway, the cross access is still good, but there is that sign that you can't make a right.
Yeah, I'm sure the sign's not there anywhere.
And I'm sure it wasn't followed very often when it was.
Couldn't you go right on Tuckahoe when you come out to this?
You, the, the restriction because the residents on Tuckahoe Lane did not want the trucks.
Oh.
Coming out and making the right and shortcutting up Tuckahoe Lane.
So send it back to Congress to deny instead?
Right.
Oh, wow.
But, right, the cross access still makes sense.
Cross access, they'll put that in there, um just so anybody should be proud to perform, it involves signage and of course the dumpster location is one.
You raise for mayor, I'll have to locate it and I'll put it on.
Okay.
I'm sure, there must be one there.
And um, at the same time engineer the sustainability, maybe charging station?
You know, again, it is a car dealership, so to speak, so they, you know, sells used cars, you know, majority of the cars there are, you know, are gasoline or the hybrid type. But I, I'm assuming that at some point in time, you know, he'll probably be selling electric cars as well and he'll probably need to put a charging station in.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can speak to him on, to that.
Yeah.
I just know my experience has been lately that especially with the residents, these chargers uh take up a lot of, of amperage. Uh it's, it's um, so the, the amount that it takes, so people have to now have to upgrade their, their electric to be able to put a charging station for their cars.
You need a two twenty, if you, if you have a, a fully electric car, I have a hybrid.
Yeah.
I'm charging, I charge with a one ten, but it takes overnight.
Right, you plug it in with a one ten. But if you have a full electric car, depending on your chargers, it could be sixty amps, which would then mean you've gotta upgrade your system.
Most residential, most chargers are fifty or sixty amps, but if you start going into commercial chargers, you could be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want fast charging, you're talking four or five.
Yeah, I mean, my, my car does not charge fast, cause, but. And I have solar, so I don't pay for it.
Oh, okay.
That's the way to go.
So, um, I'm gonna take out the reference to sanitary since it's only office, I'm sorry, storage, yeah.
Yeah.
Storage.
And otherwise, and there was lack of public interest, so we.
You just have to modify report to what the fifty foot yard being restored to twenty foot rather.
Yeah, that's what we decided, so.
So we're good on all the issues then, Sean?
Yeah, so are we talking about now the twenty feet along the east and then along the northward?
Uh, I think the, the east would be planted.
Yes.
And then the.
The north twenty, twenty feet. Very good.
That would be your buffer.
Okay.
Great, let's adopt a report, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Corin, second by Kate, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions, six, yes.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
Oh, yeah, you have to. Yep. Merry Christmas, Kate.
Merry Christmas, thanks for the, thanks for the.
Merry Christmas, thank you, pretty goodies.
Uh, thanks.
Thanks for the good things that is.
Oh, thank, thank you.
She dropped it.
Oh, this is okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, I didn't realize.
I think my dinner, something is in here, check it later.
Well, I need to see what's in there.
I want it.
Uh, where are you dropping, uh, dropping those?
Where are we down, thirteen plus heels?
Fifteen, that's a good, that's an Hampton Bays.
Hampton Bays, um, so basically it's a, a revised um sign plan that you had approved with the original approval, um, he's got.
Yeah, this is, um, is a comparison between existing and, uh, what you got approved and what we're reporting now.
Oh, thank you.
He's, he's better than mine, probably. I didn't write something out, but it's pretty straightforward, uh it's a very similar sign, but a little bit smaller, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And A R B it, um, on December third indicating their approval.
So they realized Michael Sheehan, Commissioner Science, they have the applicant, uh, they went out to measure how large the sign was that they had proposed previously and they're like, this is too big. So they revised the plan and now um it's gonna be just uh smaller all around, um, so.
That can't be a bad thing.
Exactly, and the materials and colors and everything are exactly the same.
Smaller is better, so what's our action, Claire?
To approve the sign, um, this is.
Very good, we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions, now it's five, yes, two absent. Mike, sorry about the wait, Merry Christmas.
Um, I'm just gonna do by one, I have two items left, but I'm just gonna do one thing and then I'll wait for the last one, I can, I can bump it if you need to.
What are you taking us to?
Um, so how about number four, milk tree heights, we're gonna release the maintenance bond on this road, which would be considered to be accepted into the highway system.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Do we have a number?
I thought they were taking the, I thought they were taking the sign down.
Number four.
Do we have a now, amount?
It's released and take it to the highway system, so it isn't.
Yeah, but there, there was a sign and I, I thought they gave the, the town took over that place where the sign was and I, is the sign still there?
Number four. Um, so here's the subdivision, right?
Yeah, a little triangle on the east, northeast.
So, we own the signs, is the sign there?
I, last, I, it's been a while since I drove by there, but I, I, last time I remember seeing it.
I drive by there every day, I should look, look.
Well, the problem is I drive there more than I think, but I don't.
Oh, you're looking at the road, come on.
Yeah, like I'm paying attention to traffic.
Thank you, Gloria.
You know, that was, it, it was just like a year plus ago that I can't remember, do you want me to double check it?
Just a, a, a note.
Yeah.
But can we release the maintenance bond, I'll just double check it in the meantime?
Yeah, but I mean, we can move forward with it.
Yeah, 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 I know, I'll double check the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're gonna.
There, there's, uh, there's a resolution, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll just tell it one day.
Yeah, it's just a release meeting, wanna take the road into the highway system.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, and the amount of the maintenance bond is eighty three thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Corin, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions, five, yes, two absent.
And my last one is Parrish, but I'm gonna let them down, I'll do this last.
Preetan, you up, or, oh, Seth's up.
Seth is usually always last.
Not last today, so.
Uh, we are at the action deadline for Brussels, uh, this is a five thousand square foot accessory uh spray booth.
Oh, yeah.
Okayed at thirteen sixty eight Stryon Riverhead Road. Uh, I had presented our staff report to you at our last meeting and also asked for an extension due to uh a lack of the pine bearing commission's uh referral information. So I did get their referral, uh, and then they've occurred with the staff report that they will need to exhaust the uh point five five pine bearing credits to get the extra clearing. However, they did point out as well that uh a site disturbance application would need to be filed because of the frontage. Uh, along Stryon Riverhead Road had, the under story had been significantly cleared of native vegetation, whereas the survey showed it as naturally vegetated. So that would be one of the conditions that we are, I would propose to add on to the conditional approval.
Planting.
Uh, yes, site plan application, uh, and a conditional approval of the revegetation. Uh, furthermore, I had pointed out that uh my calculation showed that we only, that the site plan only had four handicap sites where we had five. Uh, that, uh, I pointed that out to Joe, but what, it seems to me I put it as another condition that another ADA compliant parking spot needed to be added to the site plan. It was five percent of ninety one and still point something, which is fine. Yeah, which is fine. Uh, those were really the two main factors uh that I wanted to point out.
I just wish the building wasn't as big.
Uh, well, though, that was.
They need for spraying the glass, I guess.
Yeah, well, it is, uh, it is within keeping of, of what's being done at the site and in with keep, in keeping with the master plan, which asks for limited low industrial use for contractors and such. Um, I would, actually, I'm sorry, I would like to bring one other thing to the planning board and that is the lack of uh def, defining how many charging stations. You would like to see at this site with ninety, uh, sixty one uh parking spots having been developed and ninety one in total being required. The others being land backed, of course. Uh, it was raised earlier, if it was five percent rule or one in twenty, uh, it was not a rule, but a recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or condition perhaps of approval. Uh, I would say two seemed adequate.
Yes, it's a good, good start.
Okay.
Yeah.
Shall we go with two then?
We'll go two, two looks good.
Okay. So those were the conditions uh in a nutshell that I proposed, but their site plan passed all the uh, uh, city standards.
Joe, you had a chance to review all these conditions? No issues, great, do we have motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by David.
Second by David, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions.
You can see, you can see that it keeps.
Five, yes, two absent.
Joe Rayner for the applicant, I don't think.
Yeah, oh, Joe Rayner, yeah, sorry, no, Joe Lombardi, from the Rayner group.
Joe Lombardi.
Joe Lombardi, sorry.
Well, you know, I, I was close.
From the Rayner group, is this still the Rayner group?
Still the Rayner group.
Yeah.
Okay, it was long and tired.
Well, see, I have it all squished together in my head.
Waiting patiently, good lord.
Thanks, Joe.
He's a two person.
Oh, boy.
How are you, Gil, good to see you.
It's a covenant amendment, uh, come on up and see if we just.
Uh, what, what item?
Uh, this is the covenant amendment for ten blueberry and twelve blueberry court.
That's Woodland Pines lots one and two.
Woodland, I'm sorry, yes, Woodland Pines, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
I know, it happens to me all day, every day, which subdivision is it?
I, I have these notes that I have to pay attention to, thank you.
So, uh, Woodland Pines is a subdivision from nineteen eighty eight, uh, we are going to be looking at lots one and two.
Okay.
Nine, ten blueberries?
Not at all.
Those fell into the, that uh category, interim zone before the A P O D, when the restrictions, we get a number of those.
Yes. So, uh, in two thousand twenty, in twenty twenty two, lot fourteen came before this planning board, uh, asking for a similar covenant amendment. Uh, they have been prescribed a forty percent clearing uh through the subdivision. And they asked for a covenant amendment to be, to have the town's code applied, which would be fifty percent, uh, which is the case here as well. So it has been done numerous times for the Woodland Pines subdivision, I would propose, uh, I have, I have the gov, sorry, draft resolutions. Uh, for both, if you'd like to take a peek.
No public hearing required?
Do you know if the public hearing was required, sir? The covenant, oh, Gil, do you know if the public hearing was required?
I don't think for the other one, I don't think it was.
No, I didn't, no, it wasn't.
Okay, for the other one either, okay.
So do they do, so they don't?
And one's got a house on it and the other one's two B.
That's right, one is vacant and one has.
They're next to each other, is this it?
Yes, they are, sorry, this is one above and uh, the one above is, has, has a building apartment and I put a declaration of that house, FYI.
Just so you know, in your resolution, lot fourteen, it did, the board found no public hearing is required, and that's part of the package.
It really depends on the, the declaration of this, this file.
Right.
No, there wasn't, I think I also made a copy of the covenant too, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I did review it and now there was.
So let's act on item Woodland Pines, lot number one, ten Blueberry Court, the resolution is to modify the, to allow for the filing of an amendment declaration consistent with the A P O D. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Dave, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions, five, yes, two absent. And item fifteen is Woodland Pines lot two, that's twelve Blueberry Court, same conditions, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by David, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions, five, yes, two absent. Gil, Merry Christmas, sorry about the waiting.
Good to see you, I, I look forward to seeing you at, at wine dance.
Hope, hope you got a good, uh, wine dance, that's.
We, we see each other all summer long.
Oh, that's one of my.
Sit right next to one another.
Oh, that's great, yeah, they have some on the bench there?
Yeah.
Yep.
We're sub bakers.
Hey, okay, good for you.
Hi, everybody.
Okay, same to you, Gil, um, Seth, you're all done then, right?
I have one other, uh, a site disturbance complaint, but.
Okay, did you wanna jump in on it, Billy?
No, I was.
Head down to wine dance.
Yeah, I'm off with Gil at wine dance. Uh, so this was John French, six oh nine Sag Road.
Okay.
Item twenty one?
Item twenty one, yep.
Item twenty one, precisely. Uh, I have a hundred percent clearing on a C R one twenty in the A P O D.
Ouch.
Hundred percent clearing of a six seven.
Well, I should, I should say it's the, uh, the canopy is quite mature and has been maintained, it was the under story.
Under story.
They had gone with uh turf throughout, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's common.
It is common, so they have brought in a revegetation plan, uh, that is thick with bayberry and, and blueberry, low, low blue, blueberry, eberry, excuse me.
Okay.
Couple two E's.
We're trying to help you.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And you gave me two.
No.
That's all right.
That's all right.
It's okay, you can keep it.
Uh, at any rate, it would require thirty nine thousand nine hundred and four uh square feet of, of revegetation. Um, which would get them back to, that would be a restoration of sixty five percent of that property. Um, I have, like I said, predominantly bayberries and low blueberries, uh eighty five five gallon bayberries and three thousand one gallon blueberries. I also have a sprinkling of white pines, red oaks, scarlet oaks, white oaks and sweet bay magnolia. Um, we, yeah. So it looks, I, I had gone through two iterations with the homeowner to get all of the uh manmade structures out of the proposed revegetation area, which we, he was able to do. And still meet his sixty five percent, so I would propose that we allow this uh property to be moved forward with the revegetation.
As proposed, any questions?
Can I ask how he got caught?
Uh, again, he's a builder who had come in.
We don't, we, we don't put bond those, yeah, we don't bond in property, uh, uh, reveges.
No.
No, they have to plant them.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor, aye, opposed abstentions, five, yes, two absent.
Well, thank you.
Seth, thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, you too.
See you in the new year.
See you in January.
Happy and healthy. Thank you, hi, Seth. Uh, Preetan, you want?
Yes, uh, I think it's number seventeen, my first one, Blue's Paws.
Oh, Blue's Paws, okay, great, that's by the King Colin.
By the King.
Well, King Colin.
Oh, Wabba Nix, yeah.
Um, it's proposing to add a, uh, request for a sign. Um, I think it would be oh five, and we have two dollars five, uh, while there's, your approval included any and all future signs come before the.
That's with shopping center.
It is, yeah.
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 I have a couple of copies, if this, maybe you could share a little bit.
Hey. Little passes around, it's very nice.
And this is a sample of vinyl lettering, um.
It's purple today.
Fully noted.
They came into my home, maybe?
What is Blue Paw?
Oh, pet store.
It's a, it's a pet grooming, uh, or dog grooming, pet grooming.
It's a pet store.
Yeah, got it.
Uh, owner and applicant is here.
We go there, not Petco.
Uh, so they're proposing, um, the twenty inch lettering, uh, with a, with a new vinyl or the purple vinyl. Uh, two external goose neck fixtures. Um, and it's, that's the material there that you can see. The, everything complies with the town code, uh, the requirements that we have to do that. They already reviewed it during their December third, uh, year of 2017, and they didn't, um, I'm sorry, they, uh, recommended reducing the light fixtures from three fixtures to two, which is what you're seeing, uh, revised. And there's no other comment.
Was it, were there any specific s, s, sign codes for that particular shopping center or just did, is the design code just?
It, it wasn't specific.
Yeah.
Pardon?
It wasn't specific.
Okay, as opposed to the way we have the chance to ask.
It wasn't a, like. Yeah. Are we all good with the sign?
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
I did, um, I wanna mention the finish of the uh fixtures, the light fixtures, um, because I think the, the white on the image, but then the spec maybe said brown. So I didn't know, most of the fixtures in that shopping center are white, some are like almost a black and, and there are a couple that are custom colored. I could pull up those through you, but I didn't know if you wanted a, say, a white versus brown somewhere.
Was there anything in the site plan that, uh, required, Nick, when they did the site plan that required a specific fixture?
Not as, oh, but they are goose necks.
Yeah, they're goose necks.
But they are.
Goose necks.
Yeah.
And this is goose neck.
This is.
Yeah.
There's a goose neck, it's angled completely shrouded and you cut off, uh, twenty seven hundred pounds, so it needs the current, uh, the upcoming code update.
Great.
But everything else is, is on.
Okay, I think we're good to go, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Motion by Gloria, second by Tom, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent. Thanks, Pina, sorry about the wait.
Thanks for waiting.
Claire, you're gonna take us to, is it Parrish, is that Parrish?
Yeah, so we had a work session on Parrish Art Museum, um, it was six months ago, but they proposed to take the sign and from on the gates. And propose two signs, one of a bigger sign in the fronts.
Oh, yeah.
And then one on the eastern side so people can be able to see it, so I have like three sets for you here.
You press around.
David.
David gets his own and will share.
Cause he's special, yes. Um, so I do have also a beginning of a report, it's sort of the today, I guess. Um, I have some ideas in them, um, and on the back is actually what they're asking for for variances. Um, just so, some background, obviously, this is Parrish Art Museum, it's located in a residential zoning district, which doesn't allow for a big sign to begin with, so. Um, the existing one, which is on the gates, um, they're saying that they can't visually see it. And people don't know where to go, and that's why they feel that they need the two signs, um, the. Definitely the one to the east was a lot larger when you saw it as your work session, and I think the feedback there was to make it smaller, um.
It still looks very large.
It's very, it's, it's quite large, yes, um, so.
They're going, uh, they're at the Z B I now?
They are, and they already had a public hearing in December, but they hadn't referred it to us yet, um, and the conditions of approval for the site plan was to come to put in anyways. Um, but there's a couple issues, um, size being one of them, maybe the the main one might be appropriate because of the size of the building in the back. Um, but the other one maybe could be made smaller, there's just, I don't think there's.
One of these.
They're looking for identification, and they think it could be made into like a more appropriately sized size.
Very nice, babe.
The one at the entrance or the one in the at the front?
The front, the entrance one is two hundred and twenty square feet.
This is the front.
Large.
Mm-hmm.
The one, the one in the middle, I should say, the one at the entrance is seventy five square feet, and it's just like.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, if you're even trying to come into our code in a commercial zone, that would be forty, would be the maximum.
Yeah.
Or if you do residential, it's twelve, so it's like maybe something in between.
I mean, the frontage of the property certainly can can maybe justify the first, the big sign, right, because it's it's.
Yeah, it's kind of a low building, kind of massed home, it fits in.
Yeah.
But the entrance really is to say, here's where you enter the building, right?
Yeah.
You're advertising, here's your, here's your property, really it's on this one, it's entrance.
Yeah.
I mean, honestly, do people need to see those numbers so big, really, they're not looking for the address, they're looking for the name, Parrish Art Museum, they're not looking for two seventy nine.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And it's a combo, and they. And they don't even have the 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 number on the big sign.
They, and they don't have to, cause you, you know.
They don't, it's a museum, right.
It's ash, so, um.
I mean, this, this, this looks too big to me.
The, um.
In in relation, it looks, from the picture, it looks like the, the size of the, this looks like the size of this, and I know that's, one's closer than the other.
Yeah, 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 so it's hard to say.
So it's, it's a bad, it's hard to tell.
So you've even saying the big sign is is large, okay.
Let's scale both of them down and question whether they need, that was a good point, Dave, why do we go with the numbers? I know they have to post the street address by code.
Right, and they can, and they.
They think a lot smaller.
It looks smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think, I'm gonna even say a number on the other one, it's gotta be forty square foot or less, that's so much character.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, um, so the other one, I think a large sign is appropriate, but maybe not so large, not so long, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll mention the numbers.
And it's pretty hard not to know, it's the art museum, cause it's, but, but knowing, but knowing, but knowing where the driveway is. Because you've got the drive, there's a couple of other driveways, that's part of that spa place where the lady got murdered.
Yeah.
Yeah, murder.
But if you're from out of town, you don't know that this is a museum without this sign.
Oh, cool, yes.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it's just a building, it looks like a building in a barn, so again, why they wanted that.
You know it's something.
Well, the lithe sign sculpture.
You know it's something.
There is actually a sign that says Parrish Art Museum.
There is?
There's a tourist destination sign.
Oh, that, that sure said, right there, I thought the another one on the other side would have been more appropriate, cause that's what they're saying, is people coming from the.
East.
Cannot find it, and that's why they need that sign.
And that's, I was gonna say, if you're coming from the east and going west. The driveway.
That's the driveway sign.
The driveway sign is what you'll see, you're already past it.
Right, exactly, right.
When you see the meadow sign, so the meadow sign is really only gonna get.
For the west to the east.
Eastbound, right.
Yeah, it's people coming out east, right, and you say there's a sign there now, when you're coming west to east around where the sign is?
Well, there's, there's signs, there's string signs.
They saw the signs, and they say that can't, they can't see it, and I under, I totally understand that. Um, they're gonna have to cut the meadow in that area in front, but we understand that, that's all fine, that'll be part of your decision. Um, two other things, they want up lighting, and they say that's dark class, guy compliant, I said this now, and, and secondly, they want colored lighting. And I, I think we're, they know that.
Didn't we have them in for discussion about this a couple of years ago?
Oh, just like six months ago.
Or, cause it's six months of.
January, January.
I mean, kind of feel like, I mean, were they listening when we had the discussion?
I think they did, that other one, the one on the east, was, um, twelve foot tall, so they did listen a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
But I think this is good, I I'm gonna give this.
This is not Manhattan.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna say it, I'm going to say make it small.
So we'll make those amendments.
Yeah, I'll do those changes, and if you're available, I'll just, uh, adopt it and send it over, I wanna get them.
We'll adopt it now and you'll send us the, uh, revised.
Yeah, I'll send you the revised, uh, mark.
Do we have a motion, David?
Motion.
Sure.
Good, motion by David, second by George, Tom, second by Tom, all in favor, aye, opposed, abstentions, five yes, two absent, thank you, Claire.
Thanks.
Are we done?
I have an extension, oh, I'm sorry, I don't need to, I thought you were done.
Pina, you have, uh, the two fifty four?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty five.
Was that a lot line model condition that we's commissioned approved in June of this year?